So I am going to call this meeting to order, which means signing up for public comment is now closed. And for the last meeting of the year, I'm going to get it all right finally. So person of Governor Baker's March 12th, 2020 order suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law, GLC 30A S 18 and the governor's March 15th, 2020 order imposing strict limitations on the number of people that may gather in one place, as well as Mayor Kurti Tony's Declaration of Emergency dated March 15th, 2020. This meeting of the Somerville School Committee will be conducted via remote participation. We will post an audio recording, an audio, audio visual, audio video recording, excuse me, transcript or other comprehensive recording of these proceedings as soon as is possible after the meeting on the city of Somerville's website. And with that, I'm going to call the meeting to order with a moment of silence and a salute to the flag. Tonight's moment of silence is dedicated to the family of Dominic Maza, father of Assistant Superintendent Chad Maza, and to all the members of our community that have been lost to COVID. I pledge allegiance to the flag.
To the flag of the United States of America. Which is one nation under God. And justice for all.
Superintendent, please.
Certainly, Madam Chair. Dr. Phillips?
Yes.
Ms. Crouppen?
Here.
President McLaughlin?
Here.
Mayor Kurti Tony?
Present.
Mr. Green?
Here.
Ms. Barish?
Here.
Ms. Paton?
Present.
Dr. Ackman? Oh, okay, great. Noted. Dr. Ackman?
Here.
Ms. Norman?
Here.
We have all in attendance.
Thank you so much. And so tonight, I would like to welcome everyone who's joining us tonight, students, families, some of the public school staff and city staff and members of the public. Tonight is my last meeting as Chair of the Somerville School Committee. And I started two years ago with the Powderhouse Innovation Schools and ending in a pandemic. And I really hope for the incoming Chair Andre Green and Vice Chair Alana Crouppen that you have a much smoother ride. Throughout these two years, I have done my best, my very best to keep the focus on students and early education through post-secondary and to treat others how I would like to be treated. As adults, we model for the kids how to come together during a crisis to address the individual needs of our students and our families and our staff. And while working towards a shared, making shared progress. And it's tempting to think that once the virus is under control, the work will subside, but that will only start the next phase of addressing the learning and other losses that have happened during this pandemic. And so we've already started planning for the summer and next year, and this includes from our youngest ones to actually our current seniors. And I just want to wish each of you a restful winter break and a healthier new year. And with that, my favorite part of any evening is the time for the reporter, the student representatives. And I saw Brian is with us. Is Natala also with us?
Let's see Natalia.
Natalia is not going to be able to make it tonight.
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you for letting us know. The floor is yours, my friend.
Good evening, everyone. Today, I don't have that much to report on, but the things I do have to report on is, one, the staff of SHS are doing a holiday show for the students. There's not that much details because it's more of a surprise for everyone, but they are planning on continuing on the tradition of the holiday show that many students enjoy. On Friday, this past Friday, the 18th, there were two community conversations based on the Native American Heritage Month. One at 2:30 from 3:30 and one at 3:30 to 4:30. Even though Native American Heritage Month was in November, we still wanted to talk about this important topic. This community conversation, which was led by the Student Equity Club and which I am part of, was mainly based on recognizing the Native American people and acknowledging them. It was a time to reflect and recognize that we are in Native land. And that's all I have for tonight.
Brian, you and so many other student leaders continue to amaze me. You take a very rigorous course load. You have volunteered. You have run for office. You are with us often and it comes as no surprise that you are also a leader of the Student Equity Club and leading important discussions. So I, we are grateful to always have you and to have your perspective. And we, if there are any, does anyone have any questions for our student? No, well, I just want to say thank you. You have, this is your first year and you have come out strong and with good questions and with thorough updates. So thank you so much and I hope you have a very good winter break and get some, everyone gets a much needed time off.
Thank you. Same to you.
Thank you.
And next item on the agenda is the, is Mayor Kurti Tony's update. He's got members of his staff who will be speaking about the building reopenings, thresholds and the more information about the COVID-19. So with that, welcome Mayor Kurti Tony and I will give you the floor.
Thank you, Madam Chairwoman, to you, who are members of the school committee. And I call the public who are tuning in or present in one way or the other. And I echo one, also echo the compliments for our student reps and I wish we could have worked physically closer with them, but I know I mentioned to my son who's a senior, you have a you know, really good students representing the interest of the kids up at the, really good leaders and represent the interest and concerns of the students at Somerville High School. And to you, Madam Chairwoman, for your impeccable and passionate leadership. You definitely didn't take the easy reins throughout your tenure. So and we're all going to get there together, but thank you for your leadership. So tonight, I'm part of a collection of people presenting between myself, Rich Raich, the Head of Infrastructure Asset Management of the city. Many people probably know Rich very well and Kristen Stilges, as well as you'll hear obviously from Superintendent Skipper and her team. Actually, will Catherine be showing the slides? Because I don't, I'm not running though. I want to make sure.
I can do that. I can do that. Mayor Kurti Tony, one second.
Thank you. You're saving us as usual, Catherine. Thank you. So I'm going to, I'll be introducing, you know, setting some context and introducing Rich Raich. We'll talk about building improvements and building occupancy, distinguishing the two and how we think about reopening and about community thresholds and other indicators again, and continuing that conversation that we've had with the school community. So we can go to the next slide, Catherine, as I am, please. Let me just turn off my camera so it doesn't distract me. Sorry. As I presented at the December 7th School Committee meeting. And I remember that meeting because the news coming out in regards to where projected timeline had us all, including myself, extremely frustrated. But as I presented at that meeting, you recall that airflow improvements fall into four categories, ventilation, filtration, disinfection, humidification. You know, ventilation filtration, as you recall, are the most critical. We cannot occupy the buildings without completing these improvements. The work to implement the disinfection, humidification improvements can be completed while the buildings are occupied, however. You know, while the news was frustrating, a couple of weeks ago, we have much better news tonight. First, I do want to say that, you know, it's been so useful. I do appreciate what members of the public and the committee certainly does its job. That we probe assumptions, we ask questions, because when we do that, we, we not only evolve our approach, but we get to a much better place. And our goal here is to provide the safest, healthiest environment for our school community, teachers, the staff, the kids, and get our kids, especially our highest needs kids, back to school. And our attempt here, and this has been lauded, is to carve a path through this pandemic, even while things are happening around the community. Obviously, still concerning, trending in the wrong way, that we'll be able to not only open our schools for in-person learning, but keep them open. So our approach here is outlined briefly in this slide, as I reviewed in previous presentations, is also consistent with a study that was recently released by the Harvard School of Public Health. I actually spoke to one of the authors today, Joseph Allen, one of the authors of Schools and the Path to Zero, and we'll refer to that a little later. And I can honestly and accurately put, he was very impressed with that point. And so they said, we're going above, beyond the minimum, which is what we should do if we have the capability to do that. And we do have that here. And I'll talk about how he's going to make himself available for some of our other efforts, not just reopening, but and youth sports. So I thank him for his meeting today. So at this time, can we go to the next slide, please? So we have awarded, presently awarded contracts to both J.C. Canastraro and the T.G. Gallagher. This is important because these are the two of the best mechanical contractors in the region. Work has actually begun in the upgrade and Rich Raich can answer any of your questions in the particulars after he's not speaking momentarily. But as I presented on December 7th, the initial schedule developed by the contractors, if you call, if you recall, showed the ventilation infiltration work lasting through April. And that certainly frustrated us. And that was largely due to long lead times for equipment and materials. The last week, now say the team, all of us in the city aggressively worked with contractors and suppliers across the country to reduce the lead times of the most critical elements, the filters. Do have to want, again, thank John Fish, the CEO of Suffolk Construction. They are the general contractor, the lead contractor on the new Somerville High School. We reached out to Mr. Fish because his company has a broad range of projects across the nation and contacts with some of the the greatest breadth of manufacturers and distributors. We were able to successfully get a new source for the for the filters and we were successful in doing so and actually reducing the lead times from what was originally eight to 12 weeks. That was quoted to now just two to three weeks. And that certainly is going to have a positive impact on the last schedule we presented to you. So filters have actually already started arriving in Somerville. And we anticipate most, if not all, will be here by the end this calendar year, so the end of December. So based on this new development, the contractor, the contractors are actually revising the schedule. So I'm going to do right now is I'm going to turn this back over to Rich Raich. He's the Director of Infrastructure Asset Management. He's going to share some updates on what those schedules currently look like right now and the risk factors moving forward. And this is important context in any construction project, whether it's this or a big high school project of any type, any project of any type, there's always risk factors. Some of them are typical. But it's important to keep in mind, we are trying to thread a needle here. In years past, you know, compared to years past, what seems like days is actually weeks that you could lose and weeks, months. So we are going to go all out to thread that needle and get these schools prepared, buildings prepared in time so that the school department can make a decision on opening. So at this time, I'm going to hand the presentation over to Rich Raich. And I'll jump back in. Rich?
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Chair Norman. A pleasure and an honor working with you the past few months on this. Catherine, you can go to the next slide. Um, you know, as Mayor Kurti Tony said, one of the disappointing things we got from the contractor two weeks ago or reported on two weeks ago was the delay in the schedule. And we pushed on specifically the supply chain risk and were able to shorten up some of those lead times and rein in the schedule. But it is important to acknowledge that that isn't the only factor that can impact our schedule here. And since this is the school committee, I'll now get to play professor and teach a little bit about construction risk and going back to my days as a TA at TOS. Some of the, the high, you know, high risk factors are laid out here, the supply chain. And that isn't just, you know, a factor of COVID that is a general factor of construction, constantly evolving. You know, during the Gulf War, there were petroleum shortages. It suddenly became difficult to pave because you couldn't get asphalt. In the past decade or so, Chinese demand on steel has made steel fabrication and structure rising difficult. Now we're facing shortages in the supply chain that have specifically to do with things that that control COVID and the filters are a big item. And in fact, we cleared another one just today. The vent fans that will be installing in the nurses' suite and the wellness rooms. Those were showing a very long lead time. We worked with the supplier on that. We agreed to pay a premium to get those fans in. They were quoting seven weeks. We got that down to five to 10 days. You know, so we're constantly monitoring every piece of this to make sure we're marching this schedule along. Labor force is often a big risk factor for construction, just the availability of tradespeople to do the work. That's been indicative of the past several years while the construction boom has been happening in Boston. We have specific ones now around COVID-19. If a tradesperson, laborer gets COVID-19, not only does she or he have to quarantine to get better, but we also quarantine anyone with whom he or she had contact. So that can have impacts on the crews available to do the work, which will be a risk that carries with us throughout this project. There's risk inherent in any schedule that we get from our contractors or from our engineers. Just from the accuracy of their projections to the quality of the details, what has to come for what. And so if any of those estimates that we get from our consultants or contractors are off, then there are impacts further on down. Design emissions, anything that was missed in the quote that comes into the contract that will add work. I will note that we are, have higher risk of that happening on this project again, because we rushed through the design and got out and went under a special procurement to get the contractors on board as soon as possible. But that means that we didn't mature the design as much as we normally would. So we do have a lot of residual risk there that we might find something that needs to be done that wasn't in the bid that we need to add on. Then, of course, there's always unforeseen conditions, changes that add work to the project. And so we saw a large number of those with the high school, a very large, complex project, but pretty much any project has that potential for unforeseen conditions. And again, we're at higher risk of that because we're working on existing buildings and we may not have as much record information on those for the basis design as we would like. And then for each one of the components of this work, for each one of the buildings, how much schedule risk you have is inherent with the work that's happening. So the complexity or the quantity of the work. So the West and the Capuano, for example, are smaller buildings with more straightforward systems. So there's less risk there. The Argenziano and the Kennedy are larger buildings with more complex systems. So there's more risk there that anything along the way can drag out the work there. Next slide, Catherine, please. So what we're doing right now, we're, the contractors are developing and refining their detailed schedules. You know, and they are subject to change in the short term as we're really spinning up this project on a fast track. And again, the, the risk factors like supply chain, labor availability and clarification of design are things in the short term, in the next couple of weeks that are starting to come into focus for us. So we can retire that risk. But as we continue to progress the work, there still is residual risk, specifically additional delays due to, you know, how good those time estimates are and unforeseen conditions. So based on, you know, what we have in terms of information so far, my department, I am, has been working very closely with Superintendent Skipper and her team on reprioritizing the work so that, you know, we can deliver the buildings in a way that most benefits the students with the most need. And this active coordination is going to need to continue throughout the project. This is an endeavor because days are hours or is it the other way around? We don't have any margin of error. So we essentially have to micromanage this throughout. So that was the big caveat. And I would love to be able to put all that caveat on the next slide because I know the next slide is going to be of a lot of interest to people. In isolation, this slide is a little bit dangerous. So keep all those other caveats in mind and looking at this. And this is the, the schedule to complete the construction. And it's important to note that these dates are our construction completion dates, specifically for the ventilation filtration. The humidification and the disinfection can occur after these days and while occupied. But it is important to note, and Superintendent Skipper will speak to this in a minute, that, you know, after we do those ventilation and filtration improvements in each one of these buildings and achieve these dates, turn the buildings over, there is a certain amount of work that SPS has to do to then get those buildings occupied and get students back in them. So there is a lag after these dates. So this, this accounts, this shows in accounting for that risk, as I explained, on our optimistic and pessimistic dates for each one of the schools. So that the high school, which is its own animal in the construction, we are, as of right now, essentially on target to turn that over right after New Year. We still have some risk that the snowstorm last week set us back a few days. So, you know, I'm couching the optimistic pessimistic there on a two-week window. I also want to highlight that there is one exception to that. Next way full circle, that section of the high school, that was not due to be turned over from the construction team to public schools until next September. We accelerated that schedule knowing that it was prime real estate for some of the public schools, but, you know, we're now in a situation where things are not what we planned. So that does lie behind. Best information I have on that is that we'll be able to turn that over on the 25th or February first, the latest. I'm coming back, please. There we go. Moving on to the Capuano. We prioritize that the Capuano would come first in the Group One schedule. We're projecting that the end of January is our optimistic date and the risk that we have associated with that building, again, it's a smaller building, is about three weeks. So on the pessimistic side, we'd be looking at mid February. Contrast that with the East Somerville, which is a larger building. And also it through no fault of that contractor, we don't have as detailed a schedule from that contractor. So there's a little bit more risk in projecting the date on that. So there's sort of a five-week window. I hope to retire some of that risk by the end of the year. But again, we're looking at that January 25th through the beginning of March for the window for the East. The mods will follow afterwards from early February. Again, this is a smaller building, so we have less risk on that one, March 1st for the pessimistic. Your Genziato is a larger school and there's more work that has to be done there. It's a little bit more complex. So there's labor that goes all the way through to February 8th on the optimistic side and a larger window in terms of risk. So maybe mid-March on the pessimistic. The West, this is sort of a contrasting story here. Looking for early February for that. I've got a little bit more risk on that one because the crews that will be working on the East will then move to, excuse me, from the Capuano will move to the West. So there's a little bit more risk there that if the Capuano starts to fall behind schedule and that'll push the West behind schedule, but we're in a bracket there. The information on the Kennedy, Healy and Winter Hill is still very new. You know, that these are an optimistic pessimist projection for those ones, but they've got a lower degree of confidence on them. However, there's really no world in which any of those buildings get delivered until the March and April timeframe. So those are, those are the dates that we're tracking right now. Again, we're going to be continuing to manage this extremely closely. This is all new information. I'm only able to give Superintendent Skipper, you know, probably late day on Friday, and she hasn't had all that much time to react to it. But we will be continuing to evolve this. I'm happy to take any questions on, on the construction and then let Superintendent Skipper speak to how that informs the occupancy plan.
Thank you for that presentation, Mr. Raich. And it does, for me, it's very helpful to see it in this format. Ms. Paton, you have a question? And as my colleagues have questions, if you could turn on your camera, ideally, we would all be on screen. Maybe after the presentation, we'll see what the bandwidth is. So Ms. Paton and then Ms. Crouppen?
Thank you, Chair Norman, through you to Mr. Raich. Thank you for the update. I had a specific question. What, at what point do you think you will be confident in a date? So for example, is there a two or three-week lead time where you can confidently say a date is a date? Because in particular, it takes a good deal of planning for the district to actually introduce and contact families and contact staff and bring students back in. So having an idea of what the confidence window is, when you feel good about a specific date for each building is incredibly important. And will it be a week, two weeks, three weeks out? Thank you.
Thank you for the question. It's dependent on a large number of variables. Certainly, within two weeks of opening, I will have a high degree of confidence that we're on a glide path for that last two weeks. We'll be able to retire a lot of risk in the coming two weeks as the orders are secured for all the equipment and materials, as we're getting an idea of the crew sizes, not only for who's dedicated here and these questions we'll be asking the contractors, what their, you know, company-wide labor force is and how we can draw on outside resources if we you know, that sort of COVID-19 sequestration. It's again, it's going to be actively managed. I'll be able to narrow these windows as we go.
Thank you.
Thank you for that. Ms. Crouppen?
Thank you. Through the chair to Mr. Raich. I'm just, I know we've all keep seeing dates get moved further and further out, and I'm excited that we're able to pull some of them back in. But I still worry that the dates are just going to continue to get pushed forward through no fault of anyone's in particular. And so I'm just wondering if there's any way that we can figure out low occupancy in all of the buildings while we're figuring out how to fix filtration for her full occupancy? So for example, if our first wave of kids are only a certain number and it's spread out amongst all the schools, is there any way to make two classrooms in the Kennedy ready to go with a temporary filter and open windows or whatever it is, and you're talking about such low occupancy? And that then we add on to that as we're going and as buildings become able to be fully occupied? Does that make sense?
It does. And I think that that is sort of our Plan B. You know, honestly, two weeks ago, when we got the information on the lead time on the filters, we started to brainstorm around the idea of exactly that, of the portable filters. As it happens, in this contract, we have a large number of portable filters. And, and doing the math, we would be able to deploy those into classrooms and as you say, sort of use an open window and filter strategy to occupy them. So if, particularly if some of these early schools that are really needed for the high need special ed and ELL, if we need to revert to that as a Plan B, we can come up with that because we were actually already putting in the orders to the portables and we'll have them in hand by January. So I would call that a Plan B. It would also get a little bit complicated because as we're doing the recommissioning work on any one of those air handling systems, the centralized air handling systems, we wouldn't want the building occupied because then we've got no ventilation in there as the systems are down and they're testing them. But we could get pretty innovative and Um, but we could get pretty innovative and, and that is sort of a, a Plan B that we can fall back to.
Okay, thank you. Anyway, any of my other colleagues have questions for Mr. Raish right now? Seeing none. Rich, did you have anything else you wanted to add? If not, I was going to, uh, turn over to Superintendent for.
Thanks again.
Thank you. Uh, Mrs. Skipper?
Sure, great. Thank you Chair Norm. So, um, first just want to thank, uh, Rich and, and the city for, uh, trying to prioritize and get the parts that are needed and speed that up as much as possible. Um, we're excited, uh, to take advantage of the buildings that we get, um, as they come on and they're ready to go. So, um, one thing in the, you know, to point out, but, uh, we did have conversations about, in addition to the high school building, which obviously is, uh, brand-new real estate, you know, state-of-the-art ventilation and so forth, um, in a big piece of property. Uh, what else, uh, what other buildings would be favorable for us to get upfront? Uh, the Capuano is definitely on that list, which they were able to sort of support. Um, and then, and the reason for that is because it is made for our youngest students and also with special education, our ECIP, our Early Intervention Program. Um, and so keeping to sort of our priorities of high-need special education and ELL, those will stay our focus. The high school building will obviously be a main player in that, as well as the Capuano. Um, the East Somerville, because it has such a large walk zone, um, and also is our largest K-8 building, um, that is an important piece of, uh, real estate building to come back online, um, to serve our unitas population as well as, because it is a bilingual, dual-bilingual school, dual-language school, um, but also because it's such a large strand school. Um, and, uh, in transportation is very difficult for, um, many of the families. They, they put on a walk zone school. Uh, and the other is the mods, because the mods actually allow us to be able to run programming kind of simultaneously between the high school and there. So, um, sort of seeing those four buildings coming together around the same timeframe, we'll be working very hard to galvanize with those four. Um, and then look at homeschool, uh, being placed back in as we build to the grades, particularly as we get beyond pre-K and two, looking at the other schools. I think the other thing you can see from Rich's chart is that, um, while we knew the Brown was not a school that we would be returning to, uh, this year, unless, uh, things changed drastically relative to the pandemic, um, Winter Hill is also clearly what needs to be done to the building, now driving that down at, uh, toward the bottom of the list, as well as the Healy. And so that will help us to organize and be able to locate, um, some of those classrooms in the high school area. So, um, some of this is starting to come together, and we're looking forward over the next several days to really taking this, analyzing it, um, to give the public a sense. Um, usually from the time the building would be, say, ready, uh, to us being able to inhabit it from a reopening standpoint, there's, um, there's a, a bunch of things that we will be doing beforehand, but also we'll need to do, um, shortly after that. Uh, so it's everything, you know, from the markings in the buildings, like with the high school, once it's turned over for general occupancy, that we would go in and sort of mark, um, have our signage up for a COVID world, for a pandemic world, um, and look at the workflow of the various floors and which programs would be on what floor. So all of that kind of signage and marking and workflow, um, once we can get in there with something beyond kind of the hard hats, um, to be able to do that, we'll go right to that. I think additionally, we will be reserving, resur surveying the families as we, as we had, um, in the high-needs populations to be able to now tell them, you know, your program will be situated here. Um, and I think that will be very helpful to families because they'll know for sure and then, uh, be able to give us, uh, a more concrete decision, um, on student return. Um, likewise, for transportation purposes, um, you know, uh, just the transportation, mo-most of our special needs, high needs and ELL students are all transported. So we have to work closely with the bus companies, reestablish the routes, um, particularly in change of location of the buildings. That has to happen. Um, the baseline, uh, baseline COVID testing, um, is another thing. You know, we've kind of broken the mold with the staff testing. I think we learned a lot from it. Uh, we will be eventually, uh, putting students, uh, relative to community schools into that model so that we start to learn from that, um, so that by the time what we're talking about, January, February, um, you know, any, any of the kind of, uh, small problem encounters that we've had won't be, um, and we'll be able to kind of create that workflow for the students. Uh, but that includes a baseline test in addition to the weekly testing that students will have. Um, setting the classrooms up, moving, and you know, this is, uh, continuing to work in partnership with the union to talk about the hybrid model and to talk about, uh, you know, as program placement happens, um, what teachers need in terms of time for a setup, uh, what kinds of special furniture and so forth would need to be over, moved over to say a building like the high school. Um, in general, the high school has new furniture. So from that perspective, it's wonderful turnkey to go into. But depending on the program that it's serving, depending, um, relative to special education or the age of the kids, there may be other furniture that we need to move over there. So there's just a lot of moving parts, which are all very solvable and, and, you know, will go quickly. Um, but what, we have to sort of get into the building to do that and know the exact timeline of the building turnover to do that. Um, so we look forward to working in partnership with Rich, um, and his department to make that happen with Doug Cress and Health and Human Services to make the testing piece happen. Um, and we will, uh, be providing some additional information, um, at the next school committee meeting when we first come back at the beginning of the year. Uh, certainly to be able to, uh, talk about the plan relative to January and February um, and any other information that will come out, um, you know, between now and, uh, through to that school committee meeting. And I, I do believe we'll be planning a town hall, uh, likely toward the middle of January to be able to update, uh, the public.
Thank you for that. It is, um, the amount of work that goes on to, behind the scenes to open a building is more than just having the ventilation. And that was, uh, an, an incredible summary of all of the multiple steps. I don't know if any of my colleagues have questions for Superintendent Skipper, but I would also like to acknowledge that City Council President Matt McLaughlin has joined us, as well as City Councilors, uh, Jesse Klingon and Mark Nedergang. Does anyone have questions for the superintendent? If not, we'll continue on with the presentation. Uh, Mr. Green and then Ms. Behrish.
Thank you Chair. Um, and I assure everyone that in the new year, when, when, when we have a little more time, we will give the.
Speak a little louder, sir.
Sure, I was saying, thank you. Um, and I was assuring people that when the new year comes along and we have a little more time, we will give, we will give Chair Norman the petting that she deserves after possibly too hard a few years to be sharing issue Somerville. Um, but my question, my comment and question is really about this issue of, you know, I, you know, I've been in the school community, uh, in Observer now for the, pretty much this tidy this year. And especially on the issue of going back to hybrid. You know, we, we intentionally agreed with the union to start remotely, which allowed us to build what I do believe is a really good, probably the best remote education in the state. With the, with the caveat, of course, even the best remote education, no, no substitute for in-person education. The negotiations to get back in person have always been, I would say, kind of spinning around this issue of dates to return being somewhat hypothetical. Now that they are a place, a place where they can become real, it is my hope that all parties can agree to not make the perfect enemy of the good, especially after $7 million of, of infrastructure, the most robust student testing and staff testing regime in the country, that we can figure out how to get students actually in the building, or high-need students in the building, when those books, as soon as those books online, which means treating those dates as imminent and not as hypotheticals any longer.
Thank you for that.
Through men. Mr. Green, did you have a question for me too? Or did you just respond to that?
Well, just want to that.
Okay. Um, so, yes, so, so I agree. I mean, we're, we're really excited to, um, to have not only in the new building at Somerville High, but to know that several of the other buildings that we were asking to prioritize have been able to come earlier, um, in terms of the cycle. And I think, uh, kind of collectively as a group of buildings, that allows us to do some, some really good work. Um, you know, certainly, uh, in partnership with our union to talk about what that can look like, um, relative to the hybrid, get some ideas about that. Um, you know, certainly in, uh, you know, I, I think the East Somerville was of general concern, uh, to all of us because of the large walk zone, so, and from an equity issue. And so, um, you know, I, I, I do think that it is exciting to, to know with more certainty, um, this is the range of dates that we're now talking about, and it's a smaller range of dates, and it is sequential. Um, that allows us both on the front end, but also at the back end, to not really focus on these other three right now, but rather to think about populations from those three schools, that, uh, four schools actually, that need to be placed. So, um, it'll be all that information together that, you know, we, we'll look forward to working, um, with our educators on to come up with the best plan. And I think, you know, what was clear in the remote, uh, model was that we worked in partnership with one another, and that always yields the best model. So we're looking forward very much for the feedback on the hybrid to be able to do that, particularly with this new news relative to the buildings.
Thank you for both of those comments. Um, Ms. Behrish?
Thank you. I'm just trying to turn on my camera. Okay, um, I just wondered, oh, sorry about my camera. Um, I just wondered, I look like a ghost. Um, I just wondered if the superintendent could elaborate a little bit on, if, if you've gotten this far in the planning, um, on sort of how you're thinking about distributing, the students throughout the district? I don't know if you've gotten there at all, um, but I know that that was a big concern. Um, you know, how far people might have to travel and also families with kids in different grade groups being split up across the district. Um, so if you've thought that far and you could share any of that, that'd be terrific.
So, I mean, we, um, we really, uh, you know, I think Rich's team is working incredibly hard. I think some of this is, had, has become clear from Friday on. So it's a short amount of time, and so we haven't had a chance, uh, to go through a lot of it as the team yet. Um, that is information that, uh, obviously in January, early January meeting, I would hope to be able to share. I, you know, I would say that, um, you know, our priority populations that we've outlined, which is our special education, our ELL, our pre-kated two are obviously of major concern. Where homeschool can be delivered, we would prefer to keep the program in the homeschool, um, or to be able to keep the grades in the homeschool for obvious reasons that you listed, the transportation, siblings, et cetera, et cetera. Um, so all of those things, we'll, we will try to consider as we're looking through what we have. Um, I think in the special education and the ELL, though, time is of the essence, uh, for our students, uh, for their services. And so, um, it is likely that with special education and ELL, we will be really looking to the high school as a major source of, of solution for those programs. Beyond that, we will, uh, do our due diligence and take a look and then, and give some additional information in early January as to what we're thinking about the placement of the other kinds of grades and programs.
Thank you for that question. Ms. Kretchen?
Thank you. Uh, related to my earlier question for Mr. Raish and also related to Eleanor's question just now, I'm wondering why we can't do Plan A and Plan B at the same time? So it sounds to me like the high school really makes sense for the ELL and the high-needs kids because of it's a huge real estate and we can populate the whole building and we'll have one place to do transportation, et cetera. And I'm just wondering if we can't do that and then also populate some kindergarten classrooms at all the schools across the city with the mitigation that we talked about as we're getting the buildings ready for full occupancy?
Superintendent?
Through you, ma'am Chair. Um, so that, that actually will fall squarely in, in an answer. Programmatically, of course, we could do that. I think the question there is from the safety standpoint with the buildings. So that is something I would have to defer to, uh, Mr. Raish and his department to answer. But I think from a programmatic standpoint, that's actually where the classrooms are settled now. So, uh, it's not difficult in that way. It's, uh, it would be much more, um, in, in the sense of the safety of the buildings.
It just seems like it might be something worth pursuing because it would save having to move as many programs. But I understand that it's a question for Rich Raish, not for you. Thank you.
Yeah, you're welcome.
Yeah, and I, I, I appreciate all of these questions in the sense of urgency of getting our students back and the number of variables in play, uh, both from, uh, the city side in the buildings and also from the school side and getting the rooms ready, working on transportation. Um, but it's also a matter of, uh, it, the highest need students, when we will be able to serve them. Is this correct, Superintendent Skipper, that if, if, if a homeschool, I don't mean homeschool as in homeschooling, but their school where they're enrolled, uh, won't be coming on, if, say, that's a kindergartner until April, then is the thinking, uh, it would be better to have them move to the high school so that they can start in-person instruction earlier? Uh, are those sort of the, the variables weighing out in this decision-making process?
Correct. I mean, there, there's, um, I mean, there's a couple of pathways there, and I think we have to walk down each of them in order to know which ones to discount. I mean, another is that you could do partner schools where some schools are, um, coming online before others who are more K, who are K-8s, and therefore they're set up to be a K-8, uh, not the high school. And so whether or not that can happen from a proximity standpoint, that's why we really, we really do need to look at it. We have a little bit of time and, you know, um, just get, you know, um, again, Rich's team is, is working as quickly as they can. I think we look forward to being able to, to take that information, digest it this weekend next, to be able to come back with some good recommendations.
Thank you for that.
Sure.
It doesn't appear that there are any more questions for the Superintendent Mayor. Could it, Tony, do you want to resume your presentation?
Good, thank you, um, madam Chairperson. Um, I'm having a little technical difficulty. So before I present, and I don't want this slide, I'm going to switch to my phone. Um, I apologize, everything's freezing on me. Uh, so hopefully, I make it to only this one slide. But, um, we, now that we've spoken, I'm going to turn off my camera because that could be part of the problem. And now that we've spoken about building, uh, building project itself, with the construction, uh, and, um, and occupancy and distinguishing the two, and then, you know, how to, uh, the decision and the framework of decision-making, how to, when, and when school should open or, or, or be closed. Um, with some context, you know, you'll be hearing from Kristen Stojis, who's now one of the summer staff at the city of Somerville, led head of the planning division of the incident command team. Uh, and, uh, she, as you know, presented to the school committee and the public on November 9th. I, I understand the school committee and others have requested a detailed discussion of specific specials, including community spread. That'd be part of the conversation this evening. And Kristen again is going to present, uh, uh, represent our approach of making decisions about opening and closing the schools that she started in November. And she'll provide an updated version of that presentation this evening. Um, to be clear, you know, it's important for the public as you, as you're gathering a better understanding of. Um, from the city's perspective, our approach is always, it continues to be guided by, uh, by experts, by the highest level of research from a public health perspective. Uh, that informs our policymaking. You, we have, uh, our goal here is to carve a path through the pandemic as things are happening around us and our community, the region and the Commonwealth that allows us, again, to get school open and remain open. There are many examples, yes, around the world where schools haven't been able to been open safely. And as experts have reminded us, the details matter. And we're putting painstaking effort and investment in those details. You heard me, uh, you, uh, you've seen me utilize that Venn diagram. We're talking about the internal, external factors. We need to make sure as we're looking at those external factors, internal factors, we're hitting spot on, we're making our mark, we're threading that needle. So getting the buildings ready, uh, and, and those construction goals as outlined, making sure, uh, it is an innovative, renowned, a testing approach is up and running and effective. Uh, our safety protocols are, are the highest standards, and we're executing them soundly as well. And then it takes us to how do we monitor outside and what is, that we get from indicators on the external factors? Um, uh, is coming to our thinking, how do we formulate that as a community, as a school district? Uh, from the public health perspective, recommend what the school should be open or not. The bottom line is, our approach is aligned with public health experts. And I just referred to a while ago, the, the report, schools and the path to zero, which, uh, uh, is, is important in this context. I, I've heard in badly, people ask, isn't there one measurement we can use? Uh, but again, we're not going to rely on that, uh, that, that magic switch because there is no magic switch, as I just mentioned. And, uh, as, as it's been well-reported, uh, you know, that one indicator is just telling you what's happening around, the community, like a positivity rate. Uh, it's not telling us how the pandemic is evolving in the school and what we are establishing here and developing and will, which will allow us to open the schools is a real-time understanding, um, from our approach and testing, from all the safety measures we put in place, from the imminent cap improvements we're making, allows us to monitor real-time how the pandemic is evolving in any one school, in a classroom, that allows us to make strategic, uh, decisions to contain any outbreak while not having to just across the district close down schools. Um, you know, also it's important for people. You know, also it's important for people to understand ultimately the decision of whether. To have a metric or not is a school administration, school committee decision, which I'm just one voting member. I have an opinion on that, which I would not support that based on. Uh, I've come to learn about it and how experts have guided us. Uh, but I think it's important here now in order to fully inform school community members and the public of how I would take and recommend in this approach. What has gone into that policy decision and our thinking. And what our approach is for reopening, taking those matters into consideration. So at this time, I'd ask Kristen Still just. Uh, to kick over the presentation. Thank you.
Hey, um, good evening. Thank you for taking the time to talk about, um, some metrics and decision-making on data, which are two topics that are. Very dear to my heart. So, um, I'm glad to be here with you all. Um, if you could please advance to the next slide. So as, um, Mayor Kurt and Tony talked about, um, our approach to decision-making around school reopening. Is based on what we're hearing from public health experts. So this is a quote from schools in the path to zero, which is out of. Harvard. Um, and their recommendation is that we not use metrics of community spread as general points of, or we just use them as general points of information, not. Strict thresholds for closure and opening. And instead we should focus our attention on developing ways to measure in. Any in-school transmission that may happen and the quality of their infection control regime. And that's really the. Approach that I discussed when I was here in November and that, um, we'll talk about. Today is really about this, you know, what, how can we best measure any potential in-school transmission? Um, through our contact tracing and through our testing program. And, um, our approach to measuring the quality of our infection control regime, all these many. Approaches for safety that we've been all learning, um, since March. Go to the next slide, please. Um, so by now we're all very familiar with these pillars of school reopening. Rich was talking a lot about the ventilation and filtration program. Um, as Mr. Green said, we have the best, uh, testing program in the nation. Um, and there's, but sorry if you could go back. To the previous slide, please. Oops, there we go. Uh, okay, perfect. So, um, and. Plenty of PPE in hand and are working on our health and safety protocols. These approaches are being used in every school district around the world at this point. These are known as best practice. But what's really different in Somerville. It's not only the amazing work of Rich and his team. But our best in class. Best in the nation testing program where teachers will be tested twice a week, students will be tested once. For twice a week, depending on how much they're in the school. And also our contact tracing program. We are in the process of standing up our very own contact tracing program to add on to what the state is doing. So we are going to have a deeper and better understanding. Of what is happening in our school community and that gives us a lot more options and a lot more data on which to make decisions. So now the next slide. So when should we reopen? You know? Once the buildings are ready, um. How do we think about the safety of these buildings? So. Uh, everything that we've learned about community prevalence data over the course of the pandemic is that it really gives us limited information. And is not. An indicator we should be using of when schools should be opening or to what degree. And this is because community prevalence is just one. Small piece of what's relevant to our school district. And this is because staff. Live, um, in other communities, so they're not captured in that data. The people who are getting tested are not necessarily the same people who are, um, in the schools, like for example. In the summer, when everybody was getting tested to go to Maine. Um, who was going to do that, that is maybe not necessarily the same people who are in the schools. Um, so also if we're looking at the community prevalence data, that is putting us. Subject to systems that we don't control and are not going to be able to control. For example. What, um, state reopening phase we are in. Um. So what we really want to do is make decisions. Based on our ability to track and understand transmission in the schools. And with the testing and contact tracing programs we're putting into place. We will be able to do that. And this is going to give us the real-time data we need. To understand any possible COVID transmission in the schools and have data about the actual population. And the individual staff, students who are interacting each day within those schools. To next slide. So that's how we're going, thinking about when we get to the schools being open. But once they are open, how are we going to think about decision-making? So really we think because of the robustness of our screening. As a testing protocol, we're going to be able to reduce the risk of unnecessary closures. So decisions about adding additional phases or closing schools are going to be guided on the data we're getting from our testing program. Because again, this is giving us data about the actual individuals. And the schools who are interacting each day and the contact tracing information we get. But this is not to say that we won't be looking at city, county and state data. That data is useful and helping to us understand the broader context. The trends that we're seeing around us, the level of. Spread and how fast it's moving at these different levels. So next slide. Um, so what is the decision-making actually going to look like? So, um, as you may remember from my previous presentation. We have created a school opening advisory group. And we put out a call, um, for individuals to join from the parent, uh, community, people who are experts in. Issues of infectious disease. And it is this group of individuals and I'll talk about them, should give the actual list of members in just a moment. Who are going to sit down with the data on a weekly basis. And they're going to be making recommendations about opening the schools and closing. Individual schools or the full district to the mayor and the superintendent. However, decisions about moving, um, classrooms or cohorts. To remote learning are going to be made immediately. If there is a positive case, of course, we're not going to wait for some group to. Tell us that there's a positive click case. And so we need to have some students go to remote learning. Um, so we're, that part will be dynamic. Um, the first meeting of the advisory group is going to be on January 4th. Right at the first day back from the holidays, they're going to get to work and start looking at the data. I'm going to share later in this presentation, all of the metrics they'll be looking at and the data on each of those metrics is going to be available to the advisory group. But also to the public and available on the SPS COVID dashboard, which will be updated weekly. So if you're curious about who is on this group. The next slide is the big reveal. So from the Somerville Public Schools, um, Curly, the Chief of Staff, Ovid Morales. The East Somerville Principal and Kenya Avant, the Data Coordinator. We have, um, staff from our COVID Incident Command System Structure, the Commander Deputy Commander. Doug Crest, who you know well as HHS Director. I will be serving on it as the facilitator. My, um, co-member of the planning. Team Brianna Noonan is going to be there as our data, um. Person. She is the person who maintains the dashboard, both for the city and for the schools. And then Amy Bantham, who's a contractor who is leading our contact tracing and testing program will be there as well. And then from school committee, thank you, Dr. Phillips, for being willing to serve on this group. I'm looking forward to working with you and this endeavor. And then we have two, um, people who are both. Very strong experts in their fields and in infectious disease. Um, who are also parents in the school district. So Gabrielle Jaquez and Danielle Lantang. Hopefully I'm pronouncing their last names properly. Gabrielle is an emergency physician with experience and expertise in viral outbreaks. Danielle is an environmental engineer and also an infectious disease expert. They both in their day jobs. Are actively involved in setting COVID policies. So we're really looking forward to them. Bringing their expertise and, but I also want to thank everyone who applied. It's always so amazing. When there's a call put out for residents of Somerville to apply for anything because. The real commitment, but also the deep expertise and, um, the quality of professionals in Somerville is always mind-blowing. So thank you, everyone. Who applied. It was a tough decision. Um, and so next slide, please. So communication around positive cases and closures is really important. Can't just only be through a, a dashboard. Um, so decisions about closures are going to be made if we go back. And in a very surgical way, based on the data. So cla- individual classrooms cohorts. Be moved to remote learning, but also school, um, on a school-by-school basis. Um, and the schools are, is establishing a communication protocol to guide the communications with families around positive cases once we're back in schools. Um, and so I'm sure you'll be hearing more about that at a later date. And so now the next slide. So this is just to kind of sum up how we're thinking about. The data and. The real core for us is a testing program and contact tracing data. Again, this is because this is the data about the actual people. Who are present in the schools and interacting on a day-to-day basis. The soup that they're swimming in as individuals is what's happening in the city, what's happening in the county and what's happening at the state level. This data points are going to be important for context setting, but our decision-making is really going to be focused on what we're learning about. Um, the individuals in the school system through testing and contact tracing. To next slide. Um, this is a, a repeat of the, um, quote that was in, at the beginning. About the importance of focusing on our transmission and measuring that and any possible transmission. But there isn't a really important step before. We get to schools and have established this robust screen testing program. And that's the baseline testing piece. That is kind of, um, how we're going to understand what prevalence in our school population. It's our first look at. What that prevalence is like for both staff and students. And we're already getting a sense of this because the testing that's been available for staff who are currently present in the schools. Has been, um, very successful. And we're glad to have that as a, like, almost like a pilot to refine it and learn as we go. Um, of course, if there's a positive individual identified through baseline testing, they will receive guidance on isolation protocols. And be contacted by our contact tracing team to understand. Um, maybe where they acquired the virus, but also. People who may, that need now to quarantine or isolate based on their exposure to that person. So. Um, that is going to help us keep individuals who have the virus from entering the schools. And of course they'll come back only when it is safe for them to do so. Next slide. So I'm going to, just to remind us all again, walk through the indicators for decision-making that were presented in November. And so we have some set at the school level and then I'll go onto the city and, um. Higher geographic levels. So the ashray risk score for school buildings is going to be important. That's how we're going to know that school is safe to enter. I'm also be looking at the percentage of staff available to support in-person learning disaggregated by instructional and support staff. Because both are really key to the success of students being physically present in schools. The percentage of test results returned within 24 hours. We've gotten really great results so far with this from the current testing program. So we fully anticipate this will be a hundred percent. And the percentage of classrooms returned to remote learning. And so this is an indicator of. Um, how many positive tests are coming back, how many positive pools are coming back. The next set of indicators we'll be looking at is how we're doing on these CDC mitigation measures. So we're going to be looking at the percentage of schools reporting high compliance with. Or areas, mask wearing, social distancing, hand hygiene and respiratory etiquette and cleaning and disinfection. The next mitigation measure that we'll be looking at is around contact tracing. This is really essential that we're doing this well and it can be hard to do well. So we want to make sure that, um, our. Approach is working and it's been, um. Really amazing, the depth of thought that, and Amy Bantham and Doug Crest have put into this operation. And so we're very excited. To have this as a tool for us in our toolkit. So we'll be looking at the percentage of contacts reached within 24 hours. And then when people are contacted, the contact tracers are going to be setting up individualized testing plans for them based on their potential exposure. And so we'll be looking at the percentage of both households and contacts and community contacts who actually complete. Their individualized testing plan. And we'll also be looking at the number of cases identified as coming from a Somerville Public School System source. And we'll be looking at these indicators, both at, for, at the community level and for SPS contacts. So how are we actually going to measure these, uh, mitigation measures? So teachers and administrators will be asked to report on compliance for mask usage, social distancing and hand hygiene and respiratory etiquette. I am working with Kenya as the data coordinator in the schools to set up a system to gather this information on a weekly basis. And DPW is going to be an important source of the information about compliance with cleaning and disinfection protocols. Um, because the custodial staff are, um, situated under DPW. And then our HHS contact tracing team is going to report on the capacity and quality of the contact tracing operation. So the next set of indicators that we'll be looking at. Um, our health indicators, this is going to be really important. So we'll be looking at weekly case counts. Disaggregated by school and by cohort. And we'll be looking at the percent positivity and this will be based on individual tests. Um, so you know, as discussed previously, we're taking a pool test approach. So in a group of up to 10. It will be tested at a time. And those tests, and then if there's a positive in that pool, each individual will be tested. And so we'll be measuring positivity based on the individual tests. That would follow a pool test. The next set of indicators moves to the city, county and state level. So we'll be looking at these three levels. What is the average daily incidence per 100,000? Um, population, looking at the 14-day average. Um, and percent positivity. These are the two indicators that if you look at the state's, um. Color grading of, uh, communities, these are the two indicators that they're looking at. Um, but the, we want to separate out our percent positivity with higher education testing. So this is the tough screen testing where. People in the Tufts, um. Community are tested three times a week. Having that many tests given on, in a week and a month. Really drives down the positivity rate of our state, just because your denominator is huge. Um, so we also want to see what's happening in, in the rest of the community without those, um, students and staff at Tufts included. So we'll be, um, looking at both. Um. Uh, ways of looking at positivity. And Somerville specifically, we'll be looking at our own 14-day moving average of new cases. And the number of Somerville community members tested in the last complete week. This is a really important indicator for context about. Um, how many people, um, are getting tested because that of course affects positivity. So continuing on, how are we actually going to use these indicators? So. These indicators and the data, um, that they're producing are going to help us under, assess and understand the risk of transmission we're facing across. The schools and in the community. But. As the mayor talked at the beginning, um, they're not and cannot be thresholds that individually would trigger a closure. Um. And this is in part because of the complexity of these, uh, ways that these indicators interact with each other. So decision-making about closures is going to need to be dynamic and it's going to have to factor in what's happening across all of these indicators. And as I've said, we're really going to be putting the focus on our SPS specific indicators. Um, because that's telling us if the real-time data about the actual people who are present in the schools. To balance this provision of in-person learning and the wellbeing of our students and staff and making sure they're as safe as we can possibly. Make them. And as long as we're able to effectively test, isolate and trace. We think we'll be able to keep the schools open to in-person learning. Um, so next slide. So to say more about, okay, why not set, uh, thresholds for these indicators? So it's really important to understand the COVID data in context. There's not one individual number that is going to say. Or indicator that's going to say, yes, now we know that it's safe or now we know that it's not safe. And while we're in this place where we're not open for in-person learning. The data that we have available to us is the city, county and state level data. But these data are not a reliable proxy for what is happening in the school community because there's not. You know, there is a Venn diagram where the people tested at the city level and the people who'll be in the schools overlap. Um, but there's people, staff who aren't present in Somerville and not. You know, as we've talked about, not everybody who's getting tested is, um, in the school community. So. We really want to be making our decision about. Um, school opening and closing based on our actual individuals. So I know I keep saying, but it's such an important. Piece. We've also seen other cities have set commu- community level indicators if we can go back. Um, and then seen those clothes, those schools have to close. Even though their school level indicators were much lower than community indicators. And what we have learned from this is that thresholds give. A sense of security, but it is a false sense of security. Um, and that when the school districts realize that the thresholds that they set aren't. Really accurate of what's happening in the schools and then they change them or they go back on them, that is eroding trust with the community. And that's really what we want to avoid. And that's partly why we want to be so transparent about the data and make all. And that's really what we want to avoid. And that's partly why we want to be so transparent about the data and make all of it available publicly on the dashboard. So everyone can see what the data is and be looking at it together. Go to the next slide. So why is it that we're saying that these data are so complex and that they need to be looked at together? And so these are some of the reasons why, just to explain this a little bit more. So it really matters who is getting tested. Is it people who are symptomatic who are coming to get tested? Or is it people who want to travel? And we've seen this at various points in the summer, people wanting to go to Maine. And it was people who wanted to go see family for Thanksgiving. Now we're being flooded by people who want to travel for Christmas. The more symptomatic people you have, the higher percent positivity you're going to get. People who are looking to travel may not be. It also matters how many tests are being administered. As I spoke to earlier, having the tough screening program really drives down our positivity rate. But at various points throughout the pandemic, we've also seen that the reagent needed to run the tests or the swabs to administer them have been in short supply, and that drives down the number of tests that are available to be given, which also will impact our positivity rate and our ability to see what's happening in the community. And it also matters how mobile people are in the community. So are you able to do in-person dining? Are you able to go to the gym? What is open? So what reopening phase are we in? And finally, what is the trend of the data and the pace of change? Are we accelerating? Are we decelerating in the number of cases? And how fast is that change happening? We need to be looking at all of these factors together. So next slide. Another reason why we don't feel comfortable recommending thresholds from the ICS perspective is that there's no established scientific basis for thresholds. This is a quote from Dr. Rein Gold, who's a professor of epidemiology at the UC School of UC Berkeley School of Public Health. And I believe this article is available as a handout if you want to read the whole article. But he makes the point that it's arbitrary to choose a threshold, because we know that the bigger the number is, the worse it is. But there are no studies showing at what point it gets to be too dangerous. And so there's not really any one number that there's agreement on in the scientific community about what we should be using. And this is why you're seeing some school districts have 3%, some have 8%, or I think I saw one that had one as high as 25%. Because there's no standard that any of us can look to to make these decisions about where to set a threshold. And so finally, understanding the context and how the data points inform each other is going to lead to the best result for our decision making. And so this SPS opening advisory group is going to really be able to understand and dig in deep and discuss the data thoroughly. And the community will also be able to see that data. And we believe that this process is going to allow us to find the best balance we can between making in-person learning available and keeping staff and students safe. And that's why we have this robust list of indicators that I just walked through that doesn't just look at health indicators or test results from the schools. It doesn't just look at community spread data, and it doesn't just look at are we maintaining mitigation measures? We're looking at all of this together and as much real time as we can. And so I want to ask the mayor if you want to add any additional comments before we open this section for questions.
No, I think you hit it, Kristin. Thank you for again, every thorough, logical presentation. I'm looking forward to the questions.
I just want to say to Kristin and to everybody who worked on this presentation, a huge debt of gratitude, right? This is a significant amount of information, and it also is a clear indication that our understanding of the of COVID has evolved over time. You've been giving us information all along, but that our understanding of how it's transmitted, the ways to mitigate it just keeps increasing and increasing and increasing. And this presentation tonight makes a very compelling argument for the structure that we are, the decision making process that we are have put in place in Somerville. And it I just want to say thank you to you and to everyone, because I know a lot of people have worked on this process. And it's also reassuring as a parent to the transparency and that the this team, who's going to be making these recommendations and the expertise. You referenced the pathway to zero. Dr. Phillips and the school committee just shared that article with all of us today. It's if you have the time to read it, it really makes a very compelling argument about how to look at all the different factors in place. And I also want to just thank Dr., I don't know if he's Dr., Director of Health and Human Services Doug Cress and Jeff Curley, because the testing the COVID testing has started. It started a week or two ago, and it went remarkably smoothly. I think 120 staff members were tested within two hours and everyone got the results within 24 hours. So this isn't just theoretical about the testing. We've already started to work on it, and it is working out well. So this is I just really want to thank you for taking the time to explain this approach. You've been here many times, and I know it makes for a very long day, but this the presentation tonight demonstrates a very thorough understanding of the multitude of factors that need to be taken into consideration, especially you couple this with the testing and the mitigation of the buildings, the infiltrate, not the infiltration. All of the good work Rich and his team is doing on the buildings, it really does make to look at it in the totality of it. It is helpful to know that you were able to share the evolving and continuing understanding of this very complex disease. So thank you for that very, very thorough presentation. And there are some questions. So we have Dr. Ackman, Mr. Green, and then Dr. Phillips. Dr. Ackman, the floor is yours.
Sorry about that. Um, I am curious, forgive me if I've missed it, how this new group that interacts with the decision makers who have to make choices about whether schools are open or not. So I understand Dr. Phillips is on it, and she can communicate with that with us and, you know, members of the superintendent's staff, but I'm excited about this new body, and I'm very thankful that people are committing to it. But how, how do they, like, what is their decision making power? And how do they communicate that with the rest of us?
Through the chair, thank you for that question. So how is envisioned to work is they'll be meeting on a weekly basis to review the data that's in the dashboard. Based on that information, they will be making recommendations. So at the beginning, the recommendation would be should we open the schools to in-person learning? And then once the schools have opened to in-person learning, can they remain open? And can we move on to future phases? So the way that that's going to work is there'll be some deliberation and discussion. They will make a recommendation that will be communicated to the mayor and to the superintendent, who would have the final decision based on their recommendation.
Thank you.
Mr. Green?
Thank you. I want to echo the comments about how thorough this presentation has been. I appreciate that. I want to ask about that opening and closing quote from Harvard, Path Zero. And in particular, the goal should be zero or close to zero transmission in schools. That seems like a reasonable goal to me, but I'm not quite sure how you operationalize that. Can you talk more about what that might look like?
Yes. And so I think that you may have heard of this idea of a Swiss cheese model for prevention. And so the idea is that all of these different factors, so all of those pillars that we keep the students and the staff six feet apart, that they're wearing masks, that the air that they're breathing is moving and being filtered, that we're doing this testing, so we're limiting the number of positive individuals that are entering the schools, that when there is a positive individual that were to happen, that we understand who they interacted with. All of these things are kind of creating layers that you hope that the transmission is from individuals within the school is going to be blocked. I'm sorry, my son is here mocking my hand movements from the corner. But so we can't promise zero, good night, buddy. I love you. We can't promise zero transmission. But we're going to do everything in our power based on what we know about best practices and what's being learned about the science to keep people as safe as we possibly can. And that's why we have really taken the time to invest in the robust, you know, one of a kind testing program, but also standing up our own contact tracing system, because we didn't feel like what we were getting from the state was sufficient, in addition to the work that Rich discussed earlier this evening.
Okay, thank you. So next is Dr. Phillips, Ms. Paton, Mr. McLaughlin. I have a question, and then I will put Mr. Green back in the queue. Dr. Phillips?
Thank you. Through your chair. I guess I want to start by just recounting a couple of conversations I've had with educators lately. And then saying, you know, it's not too much for us to ask for you to tell us when it's safe to go back to school. And so my preparation, in preparation for this meeting, I was kind of skeptical as I was reviewing all our PowerPoints. And then I went to read the guidance coming out of Desi and Harvard and the Children's Hospital of Philadelphia, and realizing that everybody is really moving away from these thresholds, percent positivity or number of cases per 100,000, and realizing how in line with the best public health advice out there, Somerville's approach is. And just want to kind of call out, you know, the Path Zero report is not just written by folks at Harvard, right? It's written by Joseph Allen, Ashish Jha, Emily Oster, the people I think of as the top folks on COVID-19 in schools. So I think that's really great. There's, I want to push a little bit, though, on the kind of caveats in the guidance that people are putting out. So Desi, for example, in their guidance basically says, everyone should be in person unless they're suspected in-school transmission. Path Zero is saying, schools can be open as long as they strictly implement strategies of infection control. And what I'm seeing right now with this committee is it's a good first step. If I'm reading who's on the committee, right, we've got about four scientists on there. Perhaps not sufficient to ensure stakeholders that we're making decisions based on what the science says. And I guess the question that I have for us as a body is how can we ensure that our stakeholders, our educators and our families trust that the level of implementation of infection control is strict enough? And in-school transmission is negligible enough to keep our schools open. And I have a couple of ideas about how we could do that, but I think as a body, we need to answer that in order to have the trust in moving, you know, in order to have our community trust our path forward.
And through the chair, if I can emphasize one point about this advisory group. They will not be the ones making a decision that a classroom would move to remote or that a cohort would be able to move to remote, because it is important, it is important to have a robust conversation and deliberation about whether or not people can agree that we are safe to open or that we need to make a big closure. But there is no time to waste when there is potential transmission in a classroom or in a cohort. And that's why those decisions will be made immediately based on the data that's coming in real time in the conversation likely with Director Cress, Amy Bantham and the school system. So I'm contemplating a couple of motions, and I'll just get back in the queue.
Is there a follow-up question, Dr. Philip? Okay. Ms. Ms. Paton and Mr. McLaughlin?
Thank you, Chair Norman. I was originally going to make a comment, but actually I'm going to shift to a question and hold my comments. Do we have a plan as staff or partners for implementing the data tracking, data analysis, contract and contract tracing necessary to make sure we're monitoring the situation? I can't imagine we can take our current staff that is probably highly overburdened as it is and expect them to pull this off. As well as the other thing I'm concerned about is administering this new testing program that has been put together. And I think that's both for the city and for the superintendent.
So through the chair, Mary, would you like me to start? So we're in the process of setting up all the data pipes now, so that we'll have everything ready to be up and running. So Brianna Noonan, who is on the Summerstat team and the planning section, is going to be kind of the ringleader of collecting all of the data. And so Kenya Avant from the schools is going to be helping with the three mitigation indicator points and collecting the data. But that is the, really the only burden on the school system. As I said, DPW will be giving us the information about the cleaning protocols. Amy Bantham's team is going to be working with us on getting the testing and contact tracing data. We have data pipelines set up already to get the data from the state about what's happening at the city, county and state level based on the reports that they give. So Brianna is phenomenal. I think you all enjoy the dashboard that she puts together. You can see the dashboard if you go she has through the city at www. Very similar to what it's going to look like. Sorry, the audio is getting weird for the school system.
Through you, Madam Chair. So Ms. Paton, are you asking what additional the school side would need? To support the effort?
It's either or. I'm just, I want to make sure, understand the planning, if it's been executed or not, to make sure we have the capacity, whether it's through the district and the city, which I know is a partnership, to be able to put ourselves in the best position to be analyzing the information, to do the contact tracing, which is not minimal. And thoughts around staffing or partners to help us do that, or if it's
Yeah, so it's a great question through Madam Chair. So we actually put forward as part of the city council hearing the other night, a request for some dollars for a testing coordinator from now through the remainder of the year. We would see this person helping to organize some of the operations pieces as the testing spreads out across sites. In addition to being a support on the contact tracing, that person could also potentially audit, so collect some information. You know, the city's been thoughtful in some of the metrics, like for instance, compliance needs masks and things like that. That could be something that that person could potentially collect and help with as far as data goes. We definitely Dr. Curly, much like the city staff, Dr. Curly is trying to do a million things as well. And I think, you know, we do recognize that once we have kids back in and educators back in, at the same time that we have some remote, we're going to need every, every person possible. So that is something we did request formally through the city council to be able to use our CARES Act dollars for.
So, so that's a particular coordinator who may assist in the contract tracing, but I imagine a lot of the contract tracing is going to go through the nurses, unless I'm wrong. And are we staffing up nurses? Because nurses obviously already have a particular workload normally, and then with the COVID testing. Anyway.
So through you, Madam Chair. Correct. So HR I don't know who has a phone on, but that's really loud.
Okay, let's see if who I need, who I might mute. Let me see if I can work on this.
But long and short of it, Ms. Thank you, Ms. Santiago. So long and short of it, Ms. Paton, is that those conversations will be with Doug Crass, who oversees the nurses, as we see what our needs are, both in the students who are returning. And then obviously, we actually had two of the nurses present to the all admin both in the students who are returning and then obviously, we actually had two of the nurses present to the all admin team from three to five tonight. They did an amazing job on the presentation. They put together, you know, just through the reopening committee, just a great resource of manual and protocols. Also in conjunction with support from the city. And, you know, I think as we start back and we see from the contact tracing, the demand, I'm sure that Director Kress will think about that in terms of additional nurse support. As far as HR goes, we would see the testing coordinator is also being able to help support Mariana.
And through the chair, if I may add, Amy Bantham, through her contact tracing operation, has hired multiple individuals who have multilingual capacity, who are coming in to add capacity. Because as you, that contact tracing operation is not just for the schools, it's for the city as a whole. And, you know, as you're suggesting, we need help because we don't have the existing capacity to handle all of that. And so I know Doug and Amy call them the dream team and I think that they're off to a really great start.
Well, thank you both for that clarity. My potential confidence moving forward is related to this kind of operational aspect of being able to pull this off. It's one thing to decide whether to go in or out, but how we do it, how do we operationalize this is critical to ensure that we're minimizing risk.
I appreciate that question, Ms. Paton. Mr. McLaughlin, and then I'm going to call on myself. Mr. McLaughlin.
Thank you Chair. Don't mind the noise in the background. My house is on fire. Quick question. Thank you for the review, for the presentation. I am curious if any of these standards that we're talking about will be applied for reopenings and other sections like city buildings, gymnasiums, the hockey rink, any sort of city properties like that? Are we going to be holding these reopenings to the same standard or a similar standard?
I think Mayor or Rich, if you're still on the line, do you want to talk about the approach to how we're approaching the reopening and ventilation work in other buildings?
Yeah, can you hear me?
Yes, we can, Mayor.
I'm sorry, I've been trying to unmute myself for about 15 minutes. I, so I think I heard the whole question, President McLaughlin, so I apologize. I mean, then will the same standards be applied on the other buildings? Yes, it depends on the buildings. Separate the athletic facilities depending on the facility from the other buildings. I actually alluded to, I stated actually in my opening remarks, the conversation. I had Professor Joseph Allen, one of the authors of that report, Pathway to Zero. And we actually, we started having a conversation about how to approach scholastic sports and so forth. And he had some interesting insights. And it's disclosed to us that they'll be issuing a report on that and how to do that safely. It really depends on the building, the facility. I'm sure Rich is still on, he can confirm this. What the air exchange levels, the filtration systems and so forth. Hockey rigs, for example, have a high level of air exchange because they need to as part of their process to maintain the ice. So I'd say in short, yes, it would depend on the facility. We're certainly learning a lot about your typical, I mean, these types of buildings and how to apply that approach to typical office space. Athletic facilities, there's a, they're not the same. But we'll be outlining that sort of analysis as we think about how to get kids back, as we get back in school, how to get kids back to other physical activities.
Just a quick follow up on that. How about on the testing end? Will testing be the same as well?
I, in short, yeah, we are, we are going to be, what we wanted to have is a framework around testing. We're thinking about city employees as well and coming into city buildings. That is a conversation that is ongoing and evolving. Kristin, you may be able to add more to that, in terms of specifics. On the, on the sports side for kids, I would tell you, yes, I mean, our kids in our schools will be being tested. I know Mr. Vieira is going to talk tonight about the Greater Boston League and Scholastic Sports. And I would tell you as part of that update, you know, how we approach Scholastic Sports and what time when it's safe and having consistent protocol and uniform safety measures is going to be crucial to doing that. So that conversation is happening. We are certainly in the planning process about how, how we do that for our employees. And on the buildings as we start to open city buildings down the road.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, can I just add something on the contact tracing? I tried to, I couldn't get in on that.
Sure.
I wanted to piece information to answer Ms. Paton's question. In short, yes, we are going to be prepared and are prepared in some cases to do all those operational requirements. And as I mentioned at the beginning, we're only trying to thread a needle on the building piece. We are threading a needle on everything that has to come into place. You know, we keep getting schools open and having them remain open. As has been reminded, as we have been reminded by experts, it depends on the details. So these are all the details that you alluded to that are crucial. We're well aware of it. The beauty of how we've approached this as a city from the very beginning before the pandemic officially came upon us, that we'll find notice probably earlier, was the establishment of the Incident Command System. And so the public knows and you've heard me talk about in other public meetings and display that, illustrated it the other evening at the city council meeting. We have a dynamic framework for the organization that's able to adapt and evolve, take on these challenges, not painless. Because in essence, we have one organization doing the work of two. But the Incident Command System has allowed us to be forward thinking, to adapt, to evolve our approach, to recommend policy and to ask these very questions. Contact tracing is one example and I'll just elaborate on that a bit. The reason City of Somerville has had to, and rightfully so, develop its own contact tracing approach is because there's another example where the Commonwealth has failed us. As of a month ago, and this statistic's probably worsened, about 25% of the contacts were not being reached in the first 24 hours and more than a third of the, excuse me, more than a third of the contacts were not being reached in the first 24 hours and more than 25% were not being reached at all. We couldn't accept that. Communities around the Commonwealth have developed their own approaches and that's why Somerville started working on it a long time ago.
Thank you for that. I'm going to call on myself. One of the, I understand that not having one threshold, but we are often compared to Cambridge and one of the questions I've gotten from multiple sources is, you know, Cambridge has three thresholds. So why isn't three thresholds the approach that we're taking in Somerville? Can you speak to that, please?
Thank you, Madam Chair. And so I believe Cambridge's thresholds are all on, based on, sorry, community prevalence. And, and partly because we are setting up this baseline testing and the screen testing program, we don't want to rely on data that we know is a poor proxy for what is actually happening in our school community. And for these various reasons, why, why the data is so complex and interacting with each other. That because they don't have a similar testing program to us, they're, if they want to have thresholds, they have to rely on proxies. We don't, we're not in that situation because of the testing program we have. And so we really want to build our decision making around the strength of that program, paired with the contact tracing, paired with the other mitigation measures we're doing to kind of achieve that Swiss cheese approach.
Thank you for that answer. Ms. Crepchen, Mr. Green and then Dr. Akman, Dr. Phillips, description. The evening is getting long.
Yes, thank you. Through the chair, sort of more of a comment, although perhaps a question as well. I think I'm convinced that this is the way to go. And so assuming that we as a body decide that this is the approach we want to have, I'm just wondering about messaging to the average parent, teacher, staff member who doesn't have time to watch a 40 minute presentation at a school committee meeting, which I found super helpful and at the end I feel like I learned a lot and it made a lot of sense to me. But I'm just wondering how we're going to message this in a way that makes sense to someone who can't sit and watch a 40 minute meeting.
That is a great question and also translating it into our target languages. I think, I don't know who spoke to the trust and fear as being an element in this and understanding what we know now and as we continue to know. So I think that point, Ms. Crepchen is, is very well put because the more we know, the more we understand. And, and Kristin did an amazing job explaining it tonight. But I'm not sure Superintendent Skipper, if you are on the city side, if there's some idea of how do we message this to, not just for our, I mean, it's for our families, but also I think some of our students need to have some understanding and there's some fear, especially if this disease is hidden close to home and close to your family.
I mean, what I would say is anything that we have to message out, whether it's the buildings issues, whether it's, you know, the metrics issues, whether it's testing, I mean, we have to work in partnership with the city on the technical part of it and then rely on our communications folks like Susanna and Will and Denise. You know, in SFLC to our multilingual unit to be able to make sure that we do it, you know, in a way that is understandable, that has graphics. Those of us that are very visual, you know, need graphics and that it's accessible in all languages. So I don't think this would be any different than that. I think anything that we're trying to message has to have all those components. So, you know, depending on what it is, we'll go to work on it and then, you know, rely on our communications folks to help us with that. That's like our typical protocol.
Ms. Crepchen, do you have a follow up or thank you?
No.
Mr. Green and then Dr. Phillips?
Thank you. This is kind of elaboration on my theme earlier, which is we've discussed several things, not least which being near zero transmission, which I'd love to get some some word definition of than near zero that wanted up to. But you also mentioned things like the percentage of students who are washing their hands and you know, I think these are all really good metrics, but I know that I struggle having no background in public health to know what is good, like beyond just the idea of a trigger threshold. What is good, what are good numbers for these things?
Through the chair, this is a really important question and this is something we have been grappling with, of course, throughout all of this. And I think that this is where we have seen the science from that, you know, quote from the Wall Street Journal, doesn't help us in this, answer this question in a definitive way. And so I think this is why it's for us, from ICS perspective, is important that we're looking at these data in a dynamic way. So that, what, I guess, kind of two things. One is if there is evidence through contact tracing and our positive testing that a transmission within the school has happened, that we need to shut down immediately, right? That, that, we cannot allow that to happen unchecked. And we hope that with all these measures that we're putting in place, that that doesn't happen. But we are also going to have the systems in place to shut down to the level that we need to. And because of the data, we can do that in a much more surgical way than we would be able to otherwise. But also so that we can improve our operations as we go along. So if there ever was an issue around test result time, if we ever started to see that there was an issue in the mask wearing indicator, and because we'll have the data by schools that we can really intervene very quickly to try to address any issues that come up along the way. So I don't have a great way to answer your question and if any of my colleagues who are on want to chime in, you're, I'm, you know, happy to have your input as well. Because, just because it is so complex, we don't really, the science doesn't tell us what, what is good or what is good enough.
Mr. Green, do you have a follow up?
Yeah.
Mr. Green, it's difficult to hear you right now.
Is this better?
That's much better. Thank you.
Much better.
I am sympathetic to the complexity position. I know it's shocking that a nine month old pandemic is complex, but I'm also deeply sympathetic to the families, particularly immigrant families that we're going to sell this to, that, you know, I think rightly or wrongly, the reason things like thresholds, even if they end up being bad, appeal to people, they can put their hands around it. In a way that a metric of things where we can't even say what's a good number, is hard to get our hands around. And having some degree of transparency beyond, we have very smart people working on this and trust us has value, even if, and I agree, that hard triggers can be deeply problematic as far as actually operating and running a functioning school district.
Mr. Crepchen, would you like to speak to that?
Looks like he might be muted.
We can't hear you.
Catherine? Hold on.
Let me see if I can.
You think you can hear me now?
Yes, we can.
Sorry about that. Through you, Madam Chair, through a school community member, Green. I think that's precisely why having community thresholds, triggers, especially ones that are automatic, are problematic. Because what we want to convey to folks, especially in certain demographics, is that those triggers do not really represent anything concrete on the backend from an operational standpoint. And so what we're offering from a strategic approach standpoint is a read on the system before kids and staff go in and a read on the system while they're in. And so it's, it's a system specific safety measures and set of mitigations that is also coupled with the capital upgrades and the health measures, social distancing and the wear of masks and face covering. So from our standpoint, because we found it to be extremely confounding that some experts would, how would I put that, either advise you to use a 3% positivity rate or a 25 per 100,000 daily incidence number, could not back it up from an operational standpoint or from a contextual standpoint. Every district is different, their demographics are different, staff is different, their assets are different, the way the children would flow through the building is different. And that doesn't give you a read at all. But we can look at parents in the eyes and say, hey, this is what the data shows. X students, X staff tested positives in Cohort A, Cohort B, Cohort C, in this building, that building. So we can have the conversation if there is any type of fear or doubt, but we can have the conversation based on very specific data. As opposed to nebulous community thresholds or whatever the case may be. And I think Kristin did a really good job describing why are there faulty or inadequate, I should say, not faulty proxies. We're trying to move away from the proxies.
Yeah, if I can just add to what Omar is saying through the chair is I think what we, what we know is that to be effective at keeping people as safe as we can, we need to test, we need to trace and we need to isolate. And so we have indicators that are going to tell us how we're doing on each of those three things. And so I think part of the conversation, from my perspective, is trying to help people understand how we're operationalizing things to keep people safe. And to be able to talk about, are we, are we able to effectively test? Are we getting the test results back in time? What are we seeing from those? When we're doing tracing, are we seeing any evidence of transmission within the schools? And then are we getting the folks in the classrooms that are testing positive into, back into remote learning? Which is our, you know, in this specific instance, looking at isolation and they'll be working. And I think the other thing that I think is really going to be helping us is that the contact tracing team really sits down and takes a lot of time. I guess they don't really sit down because you can't physically be present with each other. But they have these conversations, really in-depth conversations with the individuals who are testing positive to really understand where they are, what their needs are. Not only from like, you need to isolate for 10 days, but also do you need food? Do you need other groceries? Do you need cleaning supplies? Do you need soap and shampoo? All of these basic things, they really help people access. And that not only helps people, you know, kind of. be able to weather having to isolate, but also, you know, gives them the peace of mind and gives them the ability to keep other people safe because they don't have to leave the house because, you know, you don't expect a positive COVID result. So you didn't have a ten day supply of, you know, the various things you need to make it through.
Does that answer your question, Mr. Green?
Honestly, not quite. Maybe I should, maybe I can rephrase the question in a way. So I agree with everything that's been said. But I guess I still struggle with, you know, I'm gonna use, I'm gonna use herd immunity as an example, right? And vaccines as an example, right? There's no threshold, right? There's no like, at ninety one percent, we're safe and ninety percent we're dangerous. But we know roughly that a ninety plus percent inoculation rate for a vaccine is good. Some of these metrics, I think are super important. I even know what the roughly is. And so like, to use the hand washing example, as much as I love to say one hundred percent of our kids are gonna wash their hands, we know it's not gonna happen. They're kids. But if it's ninety five percent, are we happy? If it's ninety percent, are we happy? I just, some clarity as to what is a good range of results would be incredibly helpful.
I just want to make sure I understand the question. We're not talking about community prevalence or community-based data. We're, you're specifically referring to some of the data that Kristen referred to earlier in terms of what we're extracting out of the system.
That is correct.
Okay, I'm happy to answer it unless you want to take a stab at it first, Kristen. It's, okay. The, the approach from the Gago is that hygiene and social distancing measures are a must, but we know we will be fallible. And so which is why Kristen described that layer of or set of layers of mitigation measures. Not one layer will allow you to open the system in a, in a risk reduced fashion. With that said, what Kristen described in terms of the data that we're, we would be collecting out of the system is an indicator of what level of compliance we have, if we have issues from education standpoint, does it have to reemphasize that? Do we need to deal from a management standpoint with how staffing is compared to to students? It is a way to inform the management side of things. The only thing I would emphasize, which is what most experts would absolutely agree on, is that the wear of face covering and PPE is a huge skill. It will allow us to at least get rid of, say around eighty percent of the risk of transmission alone if everyone is wearing those masks. So hand sanitizing or hand washing, for example, is another way to limit or almost eliminate surface transmission, so fomites. Instead of washing the surfaces, either on a daily basis or on an hourly basis, the approach would be to couple the two. So low frequency cleaning, which we do anyway, but also emphasize with children that it is necessary to, to wash your hands. And you don't have to achieve a ninety percent threshold or an eighty five percent threshold or a hundred percent threshold. We quite honestly do not know. The ninety five percent compliance, for example, that number from hygiene or face covering standpoint comes from how the Singapore school districts seem to be compliant with the face covering. So there isn't a magic number to any of this. It's the proper application of all those layers at the same time that allows you to get to a point where transmission risk is reduced to a maximum and you're, you're, you're building asset context is optimal for an in-person learning standpoint. So I wanted to make sure that that was clear because there is no silver bullet. It's the combination of all of it that allows you to, to achieve that low risk. And because we're fallible and because that system will be fallible, we have multiple measures. Does that make sense?
Yes. Explanation. Yes. All right. And I am aware that we are closing in at nine. We have not done public comment yet and we still have a few more items on the agenda. Dr. Phillips, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Chair, and thank you everyone for your patience and attention tonight. I just want to follow up on Mr. Green's question and push us to go a little further to get the trust we need from our community. And I want to make this motion that I'm putting in the chat. Just that I moved that the school committee work with the school department to invite public health infectious disease experts to a January meeting to offer advice on the level of infection control compliance and in-school transmission that should be cause for concern regarding SPS's ability to safely provide in-person learning in a school or group of schools.
Is there a second?
It's Alana. I'll second.
Thank you for that. Is there any discussion? Mr. Green, and then I would actually, if it's, let's, let's get a little crazy here. I would ask that my colleagues turn on their cameras. We'll see how the bandwidth goes. I think during deliberations, it's important for all of us to be able to see each other as best as possible. And we will see where technology takes us. Thank you for that. And so welcome, everybody. It's good to see all of you at once. There was a motion by Dr. Phillips, seconded by Ms. Crepchen. Now that I can see you, let's do a show of hands in terms of questions. I have Ms. Patone. I have Mr. Green. We will go from there. Ms. Patone, the floor is yours.
A simple question through you, Chair Norman, to Dr. Phillips. Can you repeat the motion? Because it was a lot and I want to make sure I have it written down correctly.
She put it in the chat. It's in the chat, organizers and panelists. You still want me to read it again?
I think it's helpful for the public to hear it because it was.
Because you all don't get to hear, get to see the chat. I move that the school committee work with the school department to invite public health slash infectious disease experts to a January meeting to offer advice on the level of infection control compliance and in-school transmission that should be cause for concern regarding SPS's ability to safely provide in-person learning in a school or group of schools.
Ms. Patone?
Thank you. Through you, Chair Norman, to Dr. Phillips. And maybe this is just a comment. I want to clarify that your motion is about what we're doing in our schools, not community thresholds, community transition rates, but only the, the best way to understand and interpret the data that gets collected in the schools to determine the safety of the situation, correct?
Yeah. So right in the, in the CDC, you saw it in the indicators here, right? There's a number of indicators about infection control compliance, masking, social distancing, number of air exchanges, those kinds of things, right? Mr. Green's question was, so what's, how do we know we have a problem, right? And so what we'd be asking here is for some experts to tell us, here's when you would have a problem with those infections controlled measures regarding in person, regarding in-school transmission. If we have transmission from one kid to another kid, does that mean that's concerning enough to shut down the district? Or is it another next step out? I would just appreciate some advice from experts about when should we really be concerned here?
Ms. Patone, did you want to, you wanted to ponder, okay. I'm going to move on to Mr. Green and I would encourage anyone else to raise their hand with questions or discussions. Mr. Green?
Thank you. As the person who will presumably cast a making this happen if the motion were to pass, I would just like some greater clarity as to what would count as actually achieving this, like, and again, this is speaking as someone who has no background in public health. Who, who are you thinking as you think in terms of experts? I know this is something that we've been asked for from others as well. Some clarity as to who we're looking at would be incredibly useful.
Dr. Phillips?
Yeah, I've been told by some members of the Environmental Working Group that they believe they could get Ashish Jha to come speak to us at one meeting. So I would imagine someone like him, someone like Joseph Allen, any of the authors of this report, to me seems like they're well-respected experts that we could reasonably get to come to one meeting.
Mr. Green, a follow up question?
That sounds great. You know, again, as, as having spent the last, however long it's been, two, three, twenty, twenty meetings and more on the union negotiating committee, I know that we have asked the union, the unions if they have experts that they would like to speak to. They have, as yet to give us some. So if we, as much were to pass, I would urge them to, to name names and see if we can get them as well. So we can, so that there can be no question that we're trying to get a diversity of views.
I would echo Mr. Green's a question of clarity, having been in this position of being asked to provide an expert without any parameters around it and also who would be responsible for that? How would that mechanism happen? What are the questions? I mean, I, I understand the intent of wanting to be very well informed. I, I would ask for more clarity about the mechanics of how this would happen. Dr. Phillips?
I'm hoping to working that out right now or tasking it to some group. Happy for that to be me to do it offline. Perhaps as a first step, we invite in concert with the Environmental Working Committee, all the authors of the Harvard Report, plus anyone suggested by the union to come to a meeting with the specific questions about. So in the report, right, they talk about infection control compliance and they list six or seven elements. So the question is, what level of compliance is concerning there? In DASSI's guidance, it says you should be open unless there's in-school transmission. To what extent? And those would just be the, the only questions. Perhaps if you guys want, there will be an opportunity for experts to talk amongst themselves and give each other feedback. But all I really think is, what is the baseline, right? What is, how do we know there's a problem?
Is there any other questions or comments on this motion? Ms. Patone?
Thank you. Through you, Chair Norman. I guess this is just a comment or deliberation. It's very compelling, the idea of outside experts. I'm just thinking this aloud, so I'm not negative to the motion, but I would almost think if we're going to bring kind of these high-powered outside experts, I'd rather have them work with our administrators and actually create, you know, provide advice on the specific planning versus coming to a school committee meeting. But maybe I'm naive and maybe we really do need that. Because I think that those teams are going to be the ones making the hardest decisions and you know, if we can get their mind share of these talented people, I would love them to be supporting the teams actually creating the work. Just an idea, though.
Other questions or comments on this motion? Ms. Patone and, okay, Ms. Patone, Mr. Green and Superintendent Skipper, would you like to add some framing to this? We can't hear, you're muted.
Sorry about that. I mean, I would just say that we're educators. We're not scientists. We're not, you know, epidemiologists. Like, we rely on our city experts and counterparts to this information. So having them work directly with us, I'm not sure that's the best strategy. Were it to be about, here's the ten best practices you should implement, we could take that and do something with that. But in terms of us brainstorming something together, we don't have that science background, which is in part why we rely heavily on our city partners for this. So I would say it's, if that's the course, then it's, it's much more work, working with our city than it is with the district admin.
Thank you for that. Ms. Patone and then Mr. Green?
I would defer first to the Mr. Green because I've already spoken.
Thank you. Mr. Green?
So, you know, obviously time is of the essence. I want, we want to step our, want our students back at the end of January. But I'm leery of skipping steps. And I feel like going straight to administrators without having a policy discussion is skipping a step that might come back to bite us. And likewise, I guess I'm curious. The, the motion as written assumes we've already decided that we're, we're all okay with only looking at school metrics as the metric for closure. Which may be true, but I want to put that explicitly clear that, that we, that we, we are consciously not missing that step.
Thank you for that comment. Are there any other questions or concerns? Mr. McLaughlin?
Thank you, Chair. I just want to say I support the motion and I'm grateful that somebody asked my opinion on something.
Thank you. Is there anyone, I mean, I, I will call on myself. I, I am obviously as a school committee member and as a parent, the safety is, and educators' safety, everyone's safety is of the utmost concern. I, the way that the motion is written, it's very general and I don't know what it's getting down to. And I don't know that, I am in no way able to evaluate that sort of information. I mean, I think I would agree with the superintendent about what is the information in terms of practical information to minimize and to increase the safety in the school. I'm all for it to, to have more of a science-based theory. I, I wouldn't be able to understand what that is and, and I would not want. I, I respect what I don't know and I appreciate the, the effort to get more information. But my question is the way that it's written, it's very broad and what is, what, what are the, if we were to invite someone, what would the specific questions we would be looking to get answers to? Dr. Phillips, can you speak to that?
Yeah, perhaps I'm not being very clear. So in the PowerPoint, for example, we have some indicators about mitigation. The percent of schools reporting high compliance with mask wearing, the percent of schools reporting high compliance with social distancing, the percent of schools reporting high compliance with hand hygiene and respiratory etiquette. Mr. Green asked pretty much point blank, well, how do you know when is too low? When is problematic? And it sounds like we're still figuring that out. If we're going to go ahead with these indicators, seems to me like we need to know what is problematic. And the only way to know what is problematic is to ask some experts what is problematic. My understanding is that we can control or I can make motions about what happens in the school committee and the advice we seek from experts. So I'm asking us as a body to seek some advice about what is problematic on these indicators that we have listed as the indicators for decision-making.
Ms. Behrish?
Thank you. I'm going to backtrack just a little bit because I was going to make a comment before and I think it's relevant here. And I hope that Kristen Stelges is still around and might be able to respond or maybe Omar Bakili. The way I understand it, those compliance measures, we would like them as close to a hundred percent as we can get them because that's, that's ideal, right? If we were to observe that there was a transmission, If we were to observe that there was a transmission in a classroom, those compliance measures would help us understand where the laps was, where those Swiss cheese holes were too big or there were too many of them. So that we can going forward prevent another transmission. Can, am I understa- am I understanding this correctly? It's not so much like the way I'm understanding it is that it's not necessarily that they have to be at 100% like mask wearing, I think someone said 95% came from something in Singapore because that's what was observed. So if we see that there's a transmission and then we see that, you know, hand washing was 70% and mask wearing was 60%, then we we know that those are targets. If we see that both of those things are 100%, then we have to look for different targets. We have to find something new that's gone wrong. If, for example, we see that with 70% compliance, there's no transmission, it doesn't necessarily mean that we don't keep striving for 100, but we know that that's not a high-risk item in the list. I'd love to hear from one of our public health folks about whether this is a correct interpretation of what I'm hearing or not.
Kristin, could you speak to that, please?
I think you through the chair to Ms. Barish. Yes, I think your understanding is is correct, but I would add one piece on to that is that and I, not that you were saying this, but just to clarify, we wouldn't wait until a transmission to then go back and like see what's happening in that classroom. The reason that we're getting this data on a weekly basis is so we can proactively be looking um at at a classroom level, at a cohort level, at a school level and see where compliance is not where we would like it to be. And then be able to work with the principal, the teachers to really understand what is preventing us from being at 100%? I mean, besides the fact that we're human beings and some, these are little kids, some of them who are coming back. But my son, who was with me earlier, has a lovely song that he sings, you know, to remind him that 20 seconds, you know, I think that there are some age-appropriate strategies that we can use to make sure and I'm sure that the schools are already working on those, but we want to um, you know, there's the school reopening group is going to be looking at the data on a a weekly basis, but our data team and for the ICS meets twice a week, we'll also be looking at these. That includes Amy, that includes Doug. And we have real operational decision and discussions based on the data that we're seeing in real time so that because as as we all acknowledge that these, this operation is incredibly complex. And if we're not all working together on a regular, ongoing basis, then things fall through the cracks. And so we have many layers even within the ICS of way how to look at this data, how to respond appropriately operationally. So hopefully that helps.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments? Uh, Mr. McLaughlin?
Thanks, Chair. I just want to say, you know, I'm a little confused about why this is even controversial right now because from what I understand, we have a request to basically have scientists appear before us and talk about science and talk about how to reopen the schools. And I thought that was a conversation we all had very recently. Um, so I think Dr. Phillips is just trying to have these conversations in public so that everybody knows exactly what's going on with school reopening. Doesn't seem that complicated to me to request a scientist to come in and just give us their two cents on how they think school reopening should happen. I'd much rather do that than to have a committee to make this decision elsewhere.
Thank you. Uh, Ms. Baton?
I just want to through you, Chair Norman, to Dr. Phillips, I actually appreciate the way you clarified what you were looking for. You were very specific. And um, you know, if whoever these experts are, get connected to the committee and have that relationship, that would be incredibly valuable. So it's not really just about this one meeting. So I I'm willing to support this.
I'm going to call on myself in especially being anticipating Mr. Green becoming chair. So what happens? We pass this motion. What happens if we are unable to get someone to come? What happens? I guess right there, we 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 make this directive. I'm not against learning. It is, there is no one who does their homework more than me. I I love that stuff. But what I I'm concerned also about the phrasing, what if we aren't able to? Who is, who is responsible for that and how does that happen? The mechanics of it is what I'm trying to understand. And so who's, you know, we say the school department, who on the the school department is being tasked with that? Is this a school committee's effort? What happened? We don't get someone, then what happens? And I see you, Ms. Kupchan and Ms. Barish, but I'm going to ask Dr. Phillips to speak to it as the maker of the motion.
Um, I'm happy to do this many ways, happy to have it be me working with Dr. Curly, if that is appropriate to the superintendent, to try to set something up for one of our meetings in January. And if it doesn't work, I'm happy to report back to the committee on the barriers and make decisions as a group about how to move forward.
Okay.
Can I jump in here as?
You, Mr. Green, yes.
So I just want to be clear that for a number of reasons, it can't be one of our meetings. There's been discussions and I, as incoming chair, say we're going to do it, there'll be a special meeting the first week of January. It has to be that meeting. So if we can't do it by then, we can't do it.
So just let me say that back to you, Mr. Green, so that we're clear on what it is, the parameters around this motion that you're suggesting because of the January 4th is the first Monday and so there's the organization, I forget what we call it, meeting of the city, a joint meeting with the city council and the school committee that night. You're suggesting that so that our first scheduled meeting is uh January 11th, that in the week of the January 4th, you would schedule an additional school committee meeting and that if this expert, whoever this is that we attempt to get, could not appear at that meeting, then that would be the end of the effort? Or I I just want to be very clear on what it is we're voting on.
I mean, the motion as written would not make them to the effort. I would strongly encourage us to do everything we can to have it that week because you know, I think as we, this as the rest of the buildings, days or weeks, every day we drag this on is a day kids aren't back in schools, even if they could be.
Okay, I've missed Kupchan, Ms. Barish, Mayor Cretatoni and Ms. Baton?
I just have a procedural question to try to understand if this really should be a motion or if this should be a conversation and then we talk about what our next steps are. So I'm just trying to understand if if it's a motion and then it doesn't happen, then it seems like a more difficult procedural discussion down the road than simply we're having a conversation about policy and we decide at the end of our conversation that the next step is invite somebody to. Procedural question to clarify that what we're doing assuming that it's what we want to do. Does that make sense?
Yes, I share your confusion. I I don't have, that's what I'm trying to get to is the way that it 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 is declarative, but there isn't, what if it doesn't happen? So I I I don't know. Mayor Cretatoni, did you want to get in here?
I just want to hopefully add some helpful guidance. Of course, I do agree. First of all, I appreciate the fact we have a community that actually wants to hear experts and scientists. I'm grateful for that. And then I last 10 minutes and trying to move a region in the right direction with other municipal leaders. I can't tell you how impactful having those voices are. You want to make sure, remind you, we have a, first of all, I I will support the motion, but let me offer some guidance to give us some flexibility. I I can, I'm happy to help, cannot guarantee we'll get anyone. But I would not, I would not leave us in a position where we're only asking for a date and at night, my experience is that'll be more difficult. Representative group that does not violate open meeting law. With an expert or experts if they're available. Again, I I'm happy to help, but I'm not going to guarantee they're going to be available. And I mean, I just want to be clear for the public because I do have to say the motion does to believe people that believe that we do not consult, I have to state that clearly. We have, in fact, I was on the phone with Professor Allen today. I just really wish members of the committee would recognize the hard work that other members of the community, we're not, we're not running up the cup here, we thought about this deeply, but I'm fully in agreement. I'm happy to call 100 experts and work with the school committee, the founding committee to get you, because I think you should hear them. And I, again, I I applaud that. I respect and I admire that and I'm grateful for it. So I just happy to help. I would say do not tailor it so there's only one date and one night on Mr. Green's point. Leave some flexibility. My experience is it's, it takes a lot to get, especially right now, as you can imagine, they're all on demand. And yeah, so happy to help in that way. So I want to say sorry to.
Thank you for that. I think I had Ms. Barish and Ms. Baton and then if someone wanted to call the question, I would also entertain that. Ms. Barish?
I'm going to withdraw my comment. It's not relevant at this point.
Ms. Baton?
Um, just a quick comment through you, Chair Norman, to the committee. First of all, absolutely, Mayor Cretatoni, it's clear that you're consulting experts. The presentation made tonight in particular was completely aligned with the research and I'm thankful for that. And I hope, I don't think that Dr. Phillips intended, I'm assuming her intention was not to and to make any type of slight, but bringing those to us is really valuable. I also wanted to make a note that Dr. Phillips, if I have the language right, she stated it as inviting public health, public health infectious disease people. So um, you know, it sounds like we can make our best effort and and this would be very, very beneficial to us, but there's not necessarily any kind of result if it doesn't happen. So um, I would like to call the question.
Thank you for that. Uh, Ms. Santiago, can we get a roll call vote, please?
Dr. Phillips?
Yes.
Ms. Kupchan?
Yes.
President McLaughlin?
Yes.
Mayor Cretatoni?
Yes.
Mr. Green?
Yes.
Ms. Barish?
Yes.
Ms. Baton?
Yes.
Dr. Ackman?
Yes.
Ms. Norman?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you for that. Uh, I would ask if there are any remaining questions that the school committee wants to ask and if not, I would like to be able to move on to a public comment, given that it's 9:20. Uh, Ms. Baton?
I just want to make a statement and share something with my committee members and the and the public. First, I want to thank the mayor for this presentation, including information about the advisory committee as well as the specific role of community indicators. Early in the fall, I was one of the people standing up saying, I want indicators. This is where we were in the nation, in the communities, everyone was looking for these indicators. I was even at the level where I was trying to create them with community members. But clearly, the scientific community has learned so much since then. And I think that the the mayor's team has particularly done a great job in making it clear that specific community metrics are a poor proxy for school-specific data. Arguably, Somerville has the highest risk mitigation strategies in the Commonwealth, if not the country. Other districts quote, dream of having this type of testing plan. These are, these are not my words, these are other school committee members that have spoken to me when I talked to them about their plans. And um, but they're currently, they don't have these testing plans, but their students are still having the opportunity to have in-person learning. So we're in such an enviable position right now with our testing program and these high-risk mitigation strategies, yet our students are still not in school. This is not a diss about buildings, this is just a general statement. Once we have these buildings that the city deems ready for in-person education, starting with our state of the art high school, we need to be prepared for return our highest priority students to in-person learning, assuming all the risk mitigation plans. We cannot delay creating concrete plans with our educators as we did with remote learning. From going from this theoretical space that we've been in, we have to be in a practical planning mode to bring students back in person while continuing to minimize the risk for our students and staff. It's clear, despite the Herculean efforts, and I don't use that term loosely, of educators in the district staff to deliver top-notch remote learning, families and students are struggling and suffering without in-person learning. As a school committee member, I am advocating for these students and this is what's top of mind right now. We've gotten into all this facts and data and beautiful information, but the bottom line is I want to see our students have the opportunity to have in-person learning as soon as it's feasible and the risks are mitigated. So I just really wanted to make that statement. I feel like we get kind of caught in the weeds sometimes, but these plans need to be created. They need to be created carefully with our educators and I'm really looking forward to this collaboration moving forward. And I want to thank the city again for really contextualizing this whole idea of community thresholds and community data thresholds, which really is not the direction that I want to see us go into. And I really want to focus on our data that we're going to get in our schools. So thank you.
Ms. Baton, thank you for those very thoughtful remarks, but also commenting and revealing the evolution of your thinking, too. I think we have all learned a lot uh over the last several months. Dr. Ackman, did you want to get in here?
Yes, it's uh not nearly as elegant as Ms. Baton's. I is part of our testing protocol also the community school staff because uh they're the ones currently working with our students. And I just wanted to be sure, I've heard a lot about teachers and I just wanted to be sure those who are with our students now are getting tested.
Superintendent Skipper?
Sure, Madam Chair. Yes, they are, Dr. Ackman, community schools, our food service, any of the adults that are in the building or around kids in the recreational areas on a regular basis.
Thank you for clarifying.
You're welcome.
Dr. Curly, you appeared. Is there anything you would like to add or were you just available for answering?
Just available for answering, but the superintendent got it all.
Dr. Curly?
Thank you so much. Okay. I I appreciate um all of us asking questions and deliberating. I think these are important discussions to have in public, so I appreciate that. And with for no further ado, we will get on to item number four, public comment. And I do want to thank our members of the public who have hung in there with us tonight. I will quickly read my mandatory script and then we will get to hear from the public. Uh, welcome and thank you for those of you who have signed up for public comment. Speakers will be allowed three minutes. However, if you're still here, we're looking more at two minutes because there was, I think, nine people signed up. Remarks should be respectful, professional and dressed to the chair. If a speaker persists in improper remarks, the chair may terminate that individual's right to continue. Public comment is not a discussion, debate or dialogue between residents and the committee. Members of the committee will not reply to public comment in the course of the meeting. Though individual members may follow up and items for public comment may be taken up in future meetings. The school committee will not hear personal complaints of school personnel nor against any member of the school committee in public session. Individuals may address topics on the agenda or items within the school committee's scope and responsibilities, such as the district's budget, goals and policies or the role of the superintendent. Again, the school committee will not hear personal complaints of school personnel nor against any member of the school committee, school community, excuse me, in public session. And the public is always encouraged to submit comments writing the inclusion to be included for the public record. And I'm sorry, I'm running out of steam. So for public uh comment, here's who we have and I hope you are all still with us. We have Elizabeth Caffrey, Amy Marinville, King of Morande, Julia Tooth, Niva Duran, Rana McLaughlin, Christopher Dejardins, Kelly Quatch, sorry about that, and Ali, Ali, excuse me, Conny Field. Elizabeth, you still with us? Elizabeth, the floor is yours.
Yes, I'm here. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Great. Um, Elizabeth Caffrey, I live at 71 Alpine Street. I'm pleased to learn that the mayor is finally heeding to science as it relates to school reopening. I'm pleased to learn that the mayor is finally heeding to science as it relates to school reopening and learning from Joseph Allen's work on healthy buildings. Allen wrote the main guidance in June. Parents sent to the mayor and others in August, and it's now December. It is nice not to ignore Allen's advice anymore, but building occupancy is only the first step. There are severe and unknown learning gaps that our children face from how our city has mishandled this. Yes, every community is dealing with a pandemic, but our city's missteps that started this summer and still continue have created a uniquely negative situation in Somerville. I recommend we get sped, ELL, and as many elementary age learners back to five days as soon as possible. To hear that a family update will come mid-January is inexcusable if even one school is online before then. This is a city-created crisis beyond the pandemic. Stop congratulating yourself for amazing work and the best testing plan while children, while children are not in schools. I listen to my child get told to have a growth mindset every day, and I urge the district to invoke one as well. Figure out how to get to five days in person and do it quickly. To put it another way, it is time for Plan B, C, and D, Mr. Raich. That motion mentioned by Dr. Phillips is great if this was August. As a parent, I'm in support of sending my child to any school in the district for five days. At this point, hybrid is BS for lots of reasons. Thank you.
Thank you. And next up is Amy Marrenville, and then Kinga Burande. Amy, the floor is yours. Amy, are you still with us?
I am. Can you hear me?
Sure can.
Hooray. Okay, great. My name is Amy Marrenville, and I live at seventeen Carlton Street. I am here to speak for my younger son who is autistic. Virtual learning is useless for a three-year-old with his needs, so that means he hasn't had any social interaction or therapy in months. I'm not suggesting that SPS throw open the doors without caution. I'm not suggesting that planning isn't important, but low occupancy programming for high-needs kids could have been running for months now. For young children like mine, high-needs kids, nothing can replace the time we have lost. Families with money have pulled their kids from public schools. They're getting care and social support. My kid is getting nothing. It's partially my fault. I didn't push hard enough to make sure that high-needs kids were a priority. My kid has borne the brunt of that error. We heard it again tonight. He isn't a priority. Entrities for high-needs kids to be at the head of the line have been dismissed over and over again. With this in mind, I asked the school committee to push for a separate plan to get high-needs kids up and running now. Our children are suffering, and these plans should have been in place ages ago. I heard through the grapevine that tonight we would hear good news. I had hoped to hear that a January reopening for high-needs children was in play. Instead, I'm hearing that it's Plan B. I hope to hear about clear policies and protocols for those who need it desperately. In other words, I hope to hear plans. Instead, I heard more about an unnecessary and already delayed HVAC system. Half our schools being declared unusable until spring or later. No such good news, not, not such good news for poor and high-needs kids. The HVAC system is a problem of the city's creation, and its resolution will not mean that schools are free to reopen. Saying there are quote-unquote variables dismisses the basic requirements of getting high-needs kids back in the school. The city has made the weather, and now they're telling us it's raining. Those of us with high-needs kids need you to be our umbrella. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up is Kinga Burande, then Julia Toof. Kinga, the floor is yours. Kinga, are you there?
I'm here. Can you not hear me?
We can hear you now. Thank you.
Kinga Burande, fourteen Lander Street. As we watch in horror our friends, neighbors, colleagues, thousands of Americans dying every day, I find it disingenuous that the school committee in the city of Somerville is discussing the imminent opening of our schools to in-person learning, targeting mid-January as the perfect time to bring students and teachers back into our buildings for in-person instruction. Mid-January, when there are no indications that post-Thanksgiving infection rates are abating anywhere, when the predicted rise in holiday travel is likely to spike infection rates still further. Mid-January, just two and a half weeks after the winter break, mid-January, and the numbers keep rising. And here we are pitted against each other, fighting over a proposed imminent return to in-person instruction rather than coming together to support each other in our greater communities. Fractions are cherry-picking the science that supports their stances. An advocate to return to in-person, uh, learning cite the lack of data the reflex virus is transmitted in schools during in-person learning. Other factions look for anecdotal evidence that in-person teaching foments transmission of the virus. We must recognize that we are the schools. There is no difference between the community overall and Somerville district school community. Your staff, the staff that lives workshops in the city, also works in schools. The staff who live outside of Somerville will be bringing with them whatever is happening in the communities. As we talk about community thresholds, what are the district's transmission thresholds? How many infections is the district comfortable with? How many long-term disabilities? How many deaths is the Somerville School Committee comfortable with? There are no closed borders, no passports, border checks. This is us. Latest science, a Korean study from South Korea, reported in the New York Times and referenced in the Sunday Globe, based on relentless contract tracing and gathering extensive cellphone data shows that transmission contagion can be achieved unless in five minutes between people more than twenty feet apart during an indoor dining situations. In-person teaching, high students and staff, mostly masked and somewhat distanced, together for more than six hours a day in a closed building. Thank you.
Uh, next up is Julia Toof, then, uh, Niva Duran. Julia, the floor is yours.
Julia, you are self-muted?
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes, we can now. Thank you.
Thank you. My name is Julia Toof. I live at forty Pennsylvania Avenue, and I'm the mother of a three-year-old with autism who has an IEP. Not that you'd know it because it isn't currently being met. I won't mince words here. I think Plan B needs to be Plan A. You need to open the schools for the highest needs learners ASAP. If you have portable filters, you need to use them. Whether it's opening the windows, putting in the filters, that's what you just need to do. You need to open the schools as quickly as possible. You need to provide children with disabilities with free and appropriate public education, as you require to do under federal law. When my son was first diagnosed with autism, I asked his neuropsychologist, should we move? His neuropsychologist and autism expert and professor at Harvard Medical School said, not necessarily, but do not move to Chelsea Everett Revere. They do not have the same funding Somerville does. Guess what? Chelsea and Everett both have high-needs sped in person. Boston brought back seventeen hundred sped students on twelve-fourteen, which was a week ago, a week ago, including in every school in Charlestown. Medford has been back K through five. Cambridge brought back sped and pre-K through second grade in October. They've only recently gone remote for a week or two due to, uh, city levels, which I know we just discussed. Every city near us has brought back high-needs sped and often younger learners as well. The largest public school system in America, New York City, has brought back full-time in-person for K through five and high-needs students for families who opted in. I truly do not understand what Somerville is doing. Why are you waiting for a lawsuit or an audit from DESI to determine if IEPs are actually being met? Do you truly want that level of negative publicity or to have the letter the commissioner eventually writes be in the Globe, as it was from Boston, Worcester, Springfield? Having spoken to the senior advisor to the commissioner, they are watching Somerville. We would have pursued private school that will be covered by insurance, had we known that Somerville would just delay and delay in-person learning with every possible excuse. But since we relied in good faith on qualifying for Somerville public schools, we did not pursue out-of-town, out-of-town sped private school last summer, which, by the way, would have been reimbursed by insurance, as I said, not been out of pocket. It doesn't look like Somerville is moving towards out-of-district placement, though it should, given the inability to serve SPS students. Now, the only option for us is to see if any private schools actually have spots, and if they would be able to handle a child with autism. Given how long the schools have been closed, I think SPS should at least let high-needs families repeat the school year, since it is unfair for high-needs students in sped, ELL, et cetera, to miss an entire school year they were entitled to. The extent to which the city has failed
Is too, your time is over.
Yeah. Okay, I saved my time.
Thank you. Uh, next up is Niva Duran, then Ronna McLaughlin, and then Christopher Dejardins. Niva, the floor is yours.
Hi, uh, I'm Niva Duran. I live at seventeen Kingston Street. Thank you for the opportunity to speak. And as always, thank you for your hard work during the pandemic. Chair Norman, I didn't know this was your last meeting as chair, and I want to thank you especially for your leadership and for always putting the children first. I also want to say that I greatly appreciate how the entire school committee has been welcoming of public comments and responsive to feedback. I am here today to urge the city to open the schools for five-day-a-week in-person learning for young children. We know now that there's no need to close schools for deep cleaning every Wednesday. There's also lots of good evidence from around the world and locally that six-foot distancing is unnecessary when other mitigation measures are in place. Measures such as Somerville surveillance testing and comprehensive HVAC improvements. My younger two children have been in preschool in-person five days a week since September, and they are thriving with only measures such as masks and no class mixing. Moreover, for Thanksgiving and Christmas, parents were required to adhere to strict guidelines regarding gatherings and travel. There have been no cases. I would venture that the entire community is safer because the families of children with in-person learning are motivated to keep their children in school through various safe public health practices. In contrast, after nearly a year of isolation, families of children on Zoom school are desperately seeking childcare and the in-person social emotional development that their children need. This means mixing children from different ages and different towns, and is far less safe than in-person school with controlled classes would be. Hybrid is the worst of both worlds. Parents still must find childcare for their children half the time, bringing the virus in schools from the surrounding community. On a final note, I find it beyond frustrating, frankly appalling, that we are talking about prioritizing hockey, mixing teenagers susceptible to the virus as adults from different cities, some of which have far higher rates of transmission than Somerville, before we open schools for educating our most vulnerable children. I urge you to open the schools for five days a week in-person learning for young children. It's the safest choice, and it goes without saying that it's the best choice for actual education for vulnerable populations and young children. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up is Ronna McLaughlin, Christopher Dejardins, and then Kelly Galuch. I'm butchering your name, and I apologize. Ronna, the floor is yours.
Hi, my name is Ronna McLaughlin, and I live at ninety-six Rogers Avenue, Somerville. Thank you for keeping the opportunity for public comment despite the late hour. I'm sure you are all exhausted. I would like to comment tonight on behalf of the one hundred and forty Somerville parents whose letter was sent to the superintendent, school committee, and mayor yesterday. A group of us sent that letter with a belief that the mayor has committed to opening some classrooms to our highest needs learners in January and to plead for rapid and safe return for our youngest learners, pre-K through fifth grade, in a full-time, five-day-a-week mode. We've heard tonight from Mr. Raich that there is a Plan B involving portable units, the units that every other district is using to make classrooms safe. The parents of Somerville are saying it is time for Plan B. A Plan B that gets kids back as soon as possible. We are thrilled that the mayor has enlisted the help of Dr. Joseph Allen. We have made many requests for the city to accept the advice of the Healthy Buildings Program since June. We would refer the mayor to Dr. Allen's extensive materials for schools, which in no way support the time or expense of the mayor's HVAC proposal. As Dr. Allen said himself in the Harvard Gazette in October, "I've been really careful to not recommend things that are going to cost a million dollars and take months to install." We are now quite literally doing the opposite. Joseph Allen also stated that six feet should be the default minimum for adults, but it's past time we recognize that kids are different and the importance of schools is different, especially for the youngest learners. Three feet should be the default distance for schools. That is his quote. Somerville has the opportunity to be an example of database school reopening if it combines our impressive testing plan with a commitment to strong data-driven leadership. Reopening schools is both safe and necessary for the well-being of children. It is time to let the science guide us and to open all of our schools for children through grade five. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, Christopher Dejardins, the floor is yours. Are you still with us? Yes, you are. Uh, there you go.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can. Thank you.
Great. Hi, my name is Chris Dejardin. I live at thirty-two Princeton Street, and I'd like to share my family's struggles with remote learning. My son is an only child who moved this year from Capewano pre-K to Brown kindergarten. His best friend is in a different cohort at Capewano. Many of his other friends moved away, and the remaining ones have family situations, single parents, essential workers that make coordinating interactions difficult. He's too young to develop friendships digitally, so my son is desperately lonely, constantly frustrated, and so angry. Day by day, he's losing the ability to emotionally self-regulate, completely breaking down over the most minor incidents, such as the change in the order of his morning work on seesaw. Let's review the report card I just received. Cooperates and plays well, plays well with other children, not introduced or evaluated. Uses simple strategies to resolve conflicts, not introduced or evaluated. Demonstrates self-help skills, not introduced or evaluated. I could go on, but the point is that my child has a right to social emotional development, and by not allowing him to interact in person with other children, the district is denying him these rights. I would like to build on a suggestion brought up last meeting. Extend the after-school program to five days a week for all children. Provide them with a safe environment for inclement weather. No one is required to attend, and there is monetary assistance for people who want it but can't afford it. To me, our community schools program has proven to be the most adaptable program in the city, and for that I commend them. I think everyone here would agree that the street you live on shouldn't determine the quality of education you receive. Yet even now, access to onsite resources is proving to be inequitable. Some kindergarten after-school programs are feeding kids lunch indoors or letting them play in the gym, while in others, they spend the fall four, four hours in freezing temperatures. As part of the regular school day, some schools have given teachers optional space to meet students outdoors for social emotional development, while other schools have such limited spaces, the teachers have given up trying. I don't believe any of this inequity is intentional, but rather just the natural consequence of individuals trying to do the best they can in the absence of any district-wide progress. The district and city need to think creatively and give every single one of the city's children education and opportunities they deserve, and not next academic year, this one. Thank you.
Shoot, I'm muted. Uh, I am tired. We had our first, uh, meeting this morning at seven-thirty. It's been a long day. I'm sorry. Kelly Galuch, and then, uh, the last speaker will be Ali Contini Field. Kelly, the floor is yours. Kelly, you are self-muted. Go ahead and unmute yourself. Kelly?
It looks like she is having technical difficulties. She's offline. I think we should move on to Eily and then check back.
That would be great. Good suggestion, Ms. Santiago. Ali, you're, you're
Actually, she's back.
Sorry, she's back. She's right here. Uh, is Kelly with us now?
Can you hear me now?
Yes, we can. The floor is yours.
Sorry, I tried to unmute my microphone and my app crashed. Um, my name is Kelly Gleick, and I live at, um, seven Berkeley Street. Um, unlike everyone else here, I didn't really have the time to draft anything quite so elegant, but I'll just echo what a lot of others said. Um, I, you know, I appreciate all the efforts that the school committee and, uh, this, uh, the school general generally has put in place to try to get this plan up and running. But I really urge everyone to make, um, to make sure that the perfect is not the enemy of the good, that we can really try to prioritize those populations that need to get back into school. Um, and I echo those calls to try to incorporate Plan B processes, um, into getting kids into their home schools in addition to obviously sped and ELL, the young, um, children that need to get back into school for various reasons that have been brought up. I'll also echo support for five days a week in-person schooling based on, you know, information that we've learned over the past several months in terms of what's necessary to open schools safely. And I think in concert with the, you know, extremely comprehensive testing and tracing program that we're going to have in Somerville that will be world-class, this will allow our schools to open in a safe manner. Um, I'll also additionally add some support along the lines of five days in-person after-school programming. I have a pre-K kid who is at home with some, with, um, at-home care that we had to hire. And at that age in particular, the, um, in-person socialization is what he really lacks the most. So, I would love to see that at a minimum extended, um, for those that want to attend. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you for that. And our last speaker tonight is Ali. Are you still with us? Yes.
Yes, yes.
Yes, we can hear you.
Hi, I'm Eily Contini Field. I live at two fifteen Summer Street. I also don't have anything particularly eloquent to say, but I would like to underscore that even for children who seem to be doing well on paper are, for example, my son, whose report card looked quite good. Um, he is decaying, I guess is a word you could say. Um, he's in first grade at Winter Hill, and we really like his teacher. But when his mute is on, he yells potty words. He can't really interact with people that we see at the playground in a kind way. We have him doing all of his assignments, um, in between working full-time, but he is not, he, he is suffering, I think. And I would like to He is suffering, I think. And I would like to underscore five days a week in person for our younger learners as soon as we possibly can. I would be happy to send him to the new high school. I don't need him to go to Winter Hill. Whatever building is available, I would be happy to send him. And I would like to see his after-school program be five days a week because I think it's very, very helpful to him. And I also would like to see support from the city to do things to get us out of the surge. And if we have to close indoor dining, then can we just do that? Because I don't think you're going to convince people, like Kinga Berande earlier, that the schools should be open if we're in the middle of a surge. And I yield the rest of my time.
Thank you for that. And I do want to thank all the members of the public who have stayed, hung in there with us to speak and there's still a fair number of you in attendance. I will say, or community, all members of it, the dedication to our schools is. I'm appreciative of that. Superintendent, your report, the district report, please.
Ms. Madam Chair. So I am going to start with Assistant Superintendent Maza. He has two quick updates of importance for the committee. Assistant Superintendent Maza?
Thank you, Superintendent Skipper. Through you, Madam Chair. In your package, you have the proposed 2021-2022 school calendar. My hope is to get feedback from the committee and to bring the next draft back to you in January. So I'm asking for any feedback that you would like to give to reach out to me and I will incorporate those into the calendar and get it back to you next month when we have our meeting.
Thank you very much for that.
You're welcome.
Superintendent Skipper, what else do you have for us tonight?
Mr. Maza, are you going to do a update on the learning time?
I will do that. So the Department of Education, they amended the student learning time at the board meeting last week. Each district was required to submit a survey for grades one, four, seven, and 10 with a determination whether or not each district met the threshold that the board had passed. And I will say preliminary results for us, as we are clear. I had to recertify the data that we sent in last week and we're hoping to get our final results this week before we go on break.
Thank you for that.
You're welcome.
I appreciate the lateness of the hour, but I do know that the athletics update is something we have gotten a lot of interest for about. And I want to thank Athletic Director Vera and I see Principal Logg and Vina is still with us at 10 o'clock and other members of the high school community. So welcome again. It's good to see you.
Good to see you. Thank you for having me again. And I'm sure everybody has a hot cup of tea and a date with their couch soon, so I will be brief and concise and make sure I'm as clear as possible. Let me raise my volume here. So my goal today, first, thank you so much for having me. And my goal today is to give you an update on varsity sports. And secondly, to hopefully get approval for our five hockey girls to start playing hockey with the Cambridge Ridge Latin Ice Hockey Team that we co-op with. So let me first start with varsity sports and kind of give you an update. We've, and at the end of this, if it's okay with Mayor Curtis Tone, I'd like to invite him to just speak in a little more detail about what we talked about regarding the startup of varsity sports. So we've had recent meetings with the city mayors, the superintendents, the principals, the athletic directors, and our athletic trainers, most specifically this past Friday and then today. And I want to really publicly thank Mayor Curtis Tone and Superintendent Skipper for their leadership, their guidance through all this. It has not been easy trying to get through all these weeds regarding how we start and how we do it the best possible way and the most responsible and safest way. But we've had some really productive meetings about what we think makes the most sense. And I think one of the things we wanted to make sure we got beyond, although I am going to talk about an option that we felt very good about, the one thing we didn't want to get caught up in is a hard date. I think the goal here was to really work through the details of how this would look and to really focus on additional guidelines, protocols, sport modifications, and really the importance of getting our students ramped up to play varsity sports. I know sometimes it's hard because we feel like we blink our eyes and so much time has passed. But just to give you some context, our varsity kids, other than kids running on the streets and doing their own thing, our varsity kids have not played varsity sports for almost one calendar year. It's a really long time. Not just from a physical standpoint, but from a mental standpoint. But again, when we talk about ramping up and making sure we're doing it the right way, the one thing we want to avoid is any catastrophic injuries for our kids. It's really scary to think about a child coming in who hasn't done anything in six, seven, eight, nine months and jumping into a sport like soccer that is really full contact. So again, we've had amazing conversation about how we rule this out, how it looks and what we want to see. And just to give you a quick idea, we've come up with an option. And again, nothing's in stone. We need to come up with the details first. But one of the options we've talked about is starting in March. So it'd be a March 1 starting date. We would like to, for equity purposes, we'd like to put in for all three seasons. So it would be winter sports that would start in March and mid-April. And in April, starting fall 2, ending in mid-May. And then in May, starting spring and ending June, early July. And the idea would be, would be all six-week seasons with a very comprehensive, very limited schedule of anywhere from eight to 10 games. And our goal again is to be equitable across the board, so all of our kids are getting an opportunity to play sports. And again, I'll have Mayor Curtis Tone, if it's okay with him, again, to go into a little more detail about that. That's kind of the update. So not looking for an approval tonight, really looking to give you this update and then come back to you again in January when we have a little more information and more detail about how this looks in a bigger scope, so to speak. The second, go ahead. Yes, I'm sorry.
Just to be clear, so what you were asking for is, is do you need a motion on the, just to give some people context, our girls play in Cambridge. They are not part of the GBL league. They play at the Simone Rink. They do not play in the Somerville Rink. This is not, this has been an arrangement we've had for several years. And so you are asking for the school committee to approve that this one program, because it is not in the GBL with the number of the districts who are, have some of the highest rates. But you will come back to us about the other varsity sports, but it's the girls' hockey team that you're looking for some clarification or a motion on tonight? Is that correct?
That is correct. And I'm going to defer to Mayor Curtis Tone because he's had.
Mayor Curtis Tony.
Yeah, I mean, just in support of the motion and I'm going to go back to Mr. Vera and I can talk a little about the league context and why I've been involved. But I can speak firsthand on the girls' hockey. Just for context, there were only, there was only one girls' team in the Greater Boston League. That's Medford. In fact, Malden Girls play on Medford. Some of the girls play in a cooperative relationship with Cambridge Ridge and Latin. So these five girls in our high school will not have any opportunity to compete. Girls' competition and club teams are far between than boys. I know I have full disclosure, boys have played in club hockey and there are many more opportunities. Although there are a lot for girls around here and you've got to travel, a lot of that is not full season. I won't get into that technicality. I'd submit, I understand safety of your concern. I'll just say I work closely with other officials and major youth sports organizers in the state with the Commonwealth. One when they originally launched, they issued sports safety protocols and they enhanced them after there was a pause in particular hockey. There's a lot of conversation about hockey does what happens on the ice surface versus not. In Massachusetts, the driver was what was happening before and after the game. So I'll give you a couple of examples. Tailgate in the parking lots, people congregating at the games in front of, in the lobbies or outside. Massachusetts has actually done a good job and enforced and instituted very strict measures. In some rinks, you can't come in attendance. Everyone has to have a mask. Players on the ice now have to have a mask. You can't use the locker rooms. So all those places are gathering and really a lot of cop moving as well. There was a lot of cop movement going on, which was a driver of transmission that they had discovered. And there were new protocols around contact tracing because they found on the youth hockey side, there wasn't much cooperation happening from people on contact tracing. We found that as well. So I'd submit, safety protocols are much more stringent. We haven't heard anything since and how much they're not, that it has not been effective, it appears to have been. And rink owners have had to follow very stringent protocols as well. So that's why I support the five girls. If it is an equity issue, if something can be done safely, we should be doing it and I'd submit we can do this. And again, there's only one other school with a program in the GBL and they have the Malden Girls. There's no space for our girls on that team.
And just to piggyback, just to give you this information regarding, because you may have some questions or some concerns from a Cambridge standpoint as far as what they're doing and what they have in place. And I've spoken at length with Tommy Aria, the athletics director over at Cambridge. And just to give you some more information, to piggyback on what Mayor Curtis Tone just said. Again, they play in the dual-county Merrimack Valley League. It's one league in the state. This is their only opportunity to compete. And from a health and safety standpoint, the FMC Management Corporation that oversees and runs the Simone Rink does an amazing job with guidelines and protocols that they've put in place. They've been programming since summer. And just so you know, youth hockey plays there on a regular basis. And since the summertime, they've had no COVID cases at all. They also have put in more than adequate ventilation system that's COVID compliant. And from a testing standpoint, they plan on testing, including our girls, testing all of their players once a week to make sure everybody's in a good place and in a safe place. So all, again, all the protocols, all the guidelines are put in place for our kids to have success and to be safe and to compete. And it's something that them and their parents are very eager to have their kids do. So again, I ask that we hopefully can get an answer so I can give these parents an answer back only because the practices start this week and competition starts in early January. So it's time sensitive. At this point now, only before we get into questions or anything else, I would love if I could defer to Mayor Curtis Tone to just speak a little bit regarding the details of varsity sports and how we plan on rolling it out.
Oh, great. And I'm sorry, Stan, if you already covered some of this, but I believe it's to be ever mentioned. The Greater Boston League, which now will be comprised of seven teams, which we're excited about. Hopefully, we get to a place where we can all play healthy and normal in your scheduled sports opportunities, athletic opportunities and offerings for all our kids. And I do want to preface this by saying, we're talking about scholastic organized sports here. We need to have a similar approach for intramurals as well for our kids. Kids who don't want to be on a team, they need to be active. And I'd submit this is being approached to be applied to that. So now that's Somerville, Malden, Medford, Everett, Revere, Chelsea, Lynn, and we're really excited about that. So I've been involved, I have much, been a lot involved in the league as a former player, coach, and working with the league to reestablish itself and move out of the Northeast Athletic Conference. Really for equity reasons. We're excited because now this will provide our student athletes, when the school committee and school department adopted, approve this, greater opportunities in the future. Right now, the challenge wasn't, some of you have actually been speaking to President McLaughlin and others about this, you know, how do we realistically start sports, which haven't started for competition in January? I submit that, and this is what I presented to the league, it would be a mistake to try to do that for a variety of reasons. We're not ready. And I'm going to say Somerville, but the league, all the communities. Many of our communities don't have kids in school yet. I would submit that should not stop us if we could do this safely. But we are trying to, you know, it would submit to be a mistake to sprint to January. We're in the, going to be the worst part of this resurgence. And we have to really think about what safe competition and it really looks like. And that needs to be thought through. So what I'm working with Mr. Vera and others, other municipal leaders on this topic, what I suggested to the league is that we think about an approach and the details still have to come and those matter, as we all agree. Beginning all athletic competition no earlier than March 1st. There's a lot that has to happen between now and then, but I believe, Mr. Vera, that the GBL has approved that framework. And again, it's still vague because details haven't been worked out. In essence, I want to be clear, we're talking about adapting a nine-month, you know, typical interscholastic athletic schedule into a four, four and a half month. There are a variety of issues beyond the scheduling and logistics. There are health and safety issues, even addition to COVID, how do you get kids who haven't been moving and training like they normally would in a position to safely compete and avoid injury? I'd submit this is a top priority for all of us. The words I heard from all the athletic and school officials, myself and other municipal leaders, heard words, dejection, depression, loss of hope, wanting to do something. And we all want to heal all our kids, which as I say, this is not just about organized sports or no this context. It is intramural activities, arts, all the things that keep our kids enriched and right now helps soothe their emotional and mental status. And we're all going through that because of the isolation that's certainly a situation. So the GBL has agreed that they need to approach this and there's a lot of work to be done. And I'm working with Stan Vera and other leaders and the skipper to help them do that work. Answer a variety of questions. Okay, what are the details of what a season looks like? How do we lead up to it? How do we bring in other experts working with our great athletic trainers and other, you know, and working with public health experts, epidemiologists, perhaps Cambridge Health Alliance to make sure our protocols are appropriate and that they're consistent amongst all the communities that will compete one another. I think the agreement we will come to, we got to think abnormally about this and doing a way that not try to force it, doing a way that's safe for everyone. Some of it may look a lot different than it's going to, than it typically has. So there's a way to go, but I think it's a very, very positive and important step. When everyone agrees that January is a mistake, it's not going to happen effectively anyway. We know we have to come up with a plan that works, but we understand that we have to get to the other side of where we are in this resurgence. So that's where we're at. And, you know, I put support to Mr. Vera and the group to help them out with this and as well as the other municipal leaders. We're all trying to figure it out. I think I answered, did I explain that correctly, Stan?
A hundred percent, Joe. Thank you so much.
Thank you both for that. Superintendent Skipper, would you like to get in here?
Well, I'd love to thank Stan for his work on this and Mayor Curtis Tony for his advice and involvement in it. I mean, I think that, you know, hearing so many of the compelling testimonies of our parents who have younger students and what community schools and rep has meant to them, the ability for kids to be able to see one another, although not in school, but that connection that happens outside of school, that has been the one saving grace for many of the parents and students of our youngest. The high school students really have nothing in comparison to that. So they're struggling. And in fact, the high school, as we presented tonight, because it is the building that is the most ready, will be a building that we will be looking at for students of other ages, at least for the beginning. So in many ways, the students are, the high school students are double jeopardy because they'll likely be the last to come back, other than if we're figuring like CTE programming, things like that. And for the most part, they haven't been able to participate in sports, as Mr. Vera said, for a very long time. So I think, you know, we have to try to attend as best we can to the needs of all ages of our students. We're asking a lot of our older kids. And if this is something we're able to give them as an outlet, as a way to connect and to be healthy, especially given that they will be probably our last ones back into the physical buildings, then that is something I support because I think it's important for them. And we've heard that from our student athletes as well as parents of student athletes.
I'm going to jump in here. I absolutely agree. Our older students, our high school students, because of the prioritizing of high needs and younger students, there will be students who went out last March and may not go back to in-person and will graduate. And so anything that we can do to bring high school kids together in some way, I mean, I loved the training that was happening in the fall in Dilboy and when weather permits. I would love to see that again because I do think there is the emotional and social needs of all of our kids, it needs to be our priority. And the buildings, we have clearly articulated the prioritizing of students and the most high- the prioritizing of students and the most high risk. And so we are asking a lot of our older students, and so we can do this. This is great. I mean, I will just give a shout out to the the high school theater department is doing a virtual performance next month. I mean, we are, all of those creative thoughts need to happen. So just to say this, to be very clear, you are not, you will be coming back to us in January that the GBL is not clear on what their next steps are, but that you were looking for a motion to allow our girl hockey or five girls who are on the Cambridge hockey team or the co-opting, the combined team, to be able to start to play. And I would entertain a motion for that.
Is it Emily's motion?
Is there a second?
Seconded by Eleanor.
There is a motion by Dr. Ackman, seconded by Ms. Barish. Is there any discussion? I see that there are other questions now that I see them. Okay. And I didn't realize that the chat was filling up so quickly. So let me try to figure out where we are. I think Ms. Barish, did you have a comment?
Thank you. I I wrote that in there right before you mentioned the theater performance. And that's really exciting to hear. I just wanted to comment that I hope that the student, the high school students who are not athletes, but who are, for example, actors, members of the orchestra, members of the band, members of the robotics team. I hope that they will be given similar opportunities to spend time pursuing their passions in community.
Thank you for that comment. I'm not really, I I have to, I will be honest, I've gotten a little lost on the. Mr. McLaughlin, do you have a question?
I can wait.
Okay, Dr. Phillips, is there a comment on this motion?
Yeah. I have to be honest and just say that I'm really disturbed that we're about to vote to allow students to play interscholastic sports same time that we're unable to offer any student in Somerville in-person learning. That said, I think if I vote against the motion, I am hurting our students because the adults in our community can't work together to resolve this very difficult challenge. So I'm inclined to support the motion, but wanted to make that statement first.
Just to be clear, the the girls program would not be, it does not happen in a Somerville building. It is not, it does not impact other students in Somerville in that way. Although I do appreciate, I do appreciate the frustration. Are there any other questions or comments on the the motion to allow the girls hockey team to play in the Cambridge Rink? Mr. Green?
While I share on some of I shared after Phillips frustration, I am mindful that we were talking about literally five students who we were sitting in in Cambridge, and I'm okay with that. I agree with the mayor that it seems to be deeply unreasonable to assume that that sports in general will be able to resume anytime before March. And I would not be okay with that. So I'm glad to be here. That that is not the direction we are trying to go in because when it was presented to us two weeks ago, I felt very uncomfortable with the idea that we might even try to start sports in January. But March seems hopefully reasonable and I appreciate our district leadership in that.
Ms. Paton?
Thank you. And I also want to note, I think Mr. President McLaughlin floated in at some point, so maybe follow up with him afterwards. I I echo Dr. Phillips's concerns. I acknowledge and recognize that it sounds like these students, these five students would not be able to participate otherwise unless they go to this program. But I also want to be clear that if I'm part of voting forward, yes, for these five students, it doesn't mean I'm necessarily going to support an athletic program starting in March, even though I do acknowledge that our students need this desperately. I I'm still struggling with, you know, what Ms. Barish mentioned about other program. And I'm glad to see there were a lot of head nods about that and trying to figure out how can we create equivalent opportunities for our clubs or possibly to use that big, beautiful space after school for our high school students. But also, I want to just make a comment about moving swiftly with our plans to pilot our after-school programming indoors and going from a pilot to implementation as soon and as safe as possible. I would be really uncomfortable if we were moving forward with one population and leaving other populations out. I know they may not line up perfectly, but knowing that there is a pilot going on with trying to see how community schools can utilize some of the indoor space right now. I would want to see that moving forward to an implementation plan.
Thank you. Thank you. I would, Superintendent Skipper, at a future date, I think it would be helpful to share with the committee some of the programming that is going on. The robotics team, I believe, is meeting, I could be wrong. Forrest is meeting. And so there are things, I mean, our educators are being enormously resourceful. And I think it would be helpful to have an understanding of all the things that are happening in the district. Mr. McLaughlin, would you like to get in here?
Oh, thank you, Chair. Just a couple of questions. So just to be clear, this motion is to support five girls playing hockey in Cambridge.
Clear, yes.
Well, nothing, nothing more than that.
Nothing more than that.
I'm curious, why do we even need to give approval for this? What's the statute that requires us to make approval for something like this?
Well, for three man chair, I mean, for co-opting, because right now we're not yet, you know, technically in session in person. The Cambridge School Committee voted, the committees have been voting to allow the limited participation in the athletics. That way they're sanctioned through Somerville. So for instance, insurance purposes, things like that, if a student were to get hurt, transportation, all that kind of stuff, it's still considered ours, you know.
Okay, so because it's a, so, Mr. Viera, you had a comment?
I was going to say also, if I, correct me if I'm wrong, Superintendent Skipper, the Department of Education requires that when a school is technically a remote learning, we need approval from a school committee.
Correct, correct. That's the reason some Cambridge is also in remote learning for their high school. So they had to vote through school committee as well.
Okay. Are there any other sports groups that would need any type of approval between now and January? This is the only one of all the sports. Okay. So, yeah, I can't, I can't make a war over this one. It's a, I I think that this decision is like not what I signed up to do to decide whether five girls can play hockey in Cambridge. But that doesn't mean I don't want that to be misconstrued as supporting anything else in the future. As Ms. Paton said, I may not feel the same way in the future. And I would be much rather be making decisions about when the schools reopen than when five girls get to play hockey in Cambridge.
Thank you for that comment, Ms. Dr. Ackman.
What's the testing protocol for these girls? And for those sort of whole league, since they're not ours or they're hours in in Cambridge, they're not abiding by this strict testing protocol? I have to assume. So can you help me understand what the expectations are around that?
Sure, sure. And I can get more more details, of course. But speaking to the athletic director over at the Orange Line and Tommy Aria, he said that our girls would be obviously be included with his team and their plans are to test once a week.
Are there other? My screen keeps freezing up. Dr. Phillips, did you want to get in on this question?
No, I already did.
You already did, and Ms. Paton did as well. Are there any other questions or discussions? If not, I would like to go to move to a roll call vote.
Okay, Dr. Phillips?
Yes.
Discretion?
Yes.
President McLaughlin?
Yes.
Mayor Credit Tony?
Yes.
Mr. Green?
Yes.
Ms. Barish?
Yes.
Ms. Paton?
Yes.
Dr. Ackman?
Yes.
Ms. Norman?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you and thank you, Mr. Viera. We look forward to hearing from you in January. And also, I just want to thank you for thinking way out of the box and not just thinking about athletics in terms of sports teams, but the overall mental and physical health of our students. And I appreciate what you were able to do in the fall and look forward to seeing what creative ideas you have for the spring.
Thank you, everyone.
In the new year.
I exactly, thank you. And I want I want to wish everyone a happy, a very happy and safe holiday season. And Madam Chair, congrats to you on your, the end of your term.
Thank you so much.
Have a great night. Bye bye.
Thank you, be well. Next is the report of the subcommittees. And I am going to suggest that we suspend the rules and submit the various committee reports as written into the record so that we can have them be in the record and then also be done with them. Sir, any objections to submitting the reports into the record as they are? Hearing none, I am going to take that unusual step of submitting the the multiple reports. And I just would like to say publicly, there were nine personnel reports by Ms. Discretion, who has led the search for a new lawyer. She has done a phenomenal amount of work in a short amount of time, assisted by Ms. Paton and Ms. Barish on that personnel subcommittee. With that, Superintendent Skipper, did you want to get in?
No, you can do that and then I can come back at the end.
Okay, so that is, I I believe, Mr. Green, is that all that we need to do to have it written in?
I believe so. We should still vote on the on the bill rolls. So I move to approve the October, November bill rolls.
This is Emily's second.
There is a motion by Mr. Green, seconded by Dr. Ackman to approve the November and October, November bill rolls. Is there any discussion or question? Hearing none, can we get a roll call vote to approve the bill rolls, please?
For Dr. Phillips?
Yes.
Discretion?
Yes.
Mrs. McLaughlin?
Yes.
Mayor Credit Tony? Mr. Green?
Yes.
Ms. Barish?
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
Dr. Ackman?
Yes.
Norman?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you so much for that and thank you for your parliamentary assistance, Mr. Green. New business, the school committee's spring meeting schedule, is that?
In the packet.
It's in the packet. If there are, as is the incoming chair, Mr. Green has talked with folks about who will be chairing which committees. Please look at the packet. If there are adjustments you need to make to the calendar and your schedules of your subcommittee, please do that sooner than later so we can confirm the schedule. Can I get a motion to accept the donations, please?
I move to accept these donations with gratitude. A donation of $80,000 from the Education Foundation in support of Somerville Builds Teacher Leadership Model. 5,000 cloth masks from the Department of the Massachusetts Department of Elementary and Secondary Education and 51 Thanksgiving baskets from the Ryan Harrington Foundation in Somerville.
Seconded by Eleanor.
Thank you so much. There is a motion by Dr. Ackman, seconded by Ms. Barish to accept the donations. Can I get a roll call vote, please?
Dr. Phillips?
Yes.
Discretion?
Yes.
Mrs. McLaughlin?
Yes.
Mayor Credit Tony? Mr. Green?
Yes.
Ms. Barish?
That was Mr.
I got him.
Okay.
Ms. Barish?
Yes.
Ms. Paton?
Yes.
Dr. Ackman?
Yes.
Ms. Norman?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Superintendent, did you want to jump in before we go to items from board members?
Yeah, I just, first of all, I just wanted to publicly thank you, Ms. Norman. You were one of the original members from when I first came in. And honestly, in my six years, you have taught me what a strong woman leader is. You have always kept students at the center of decision-making, not politics. You are tireless in your working and you are extremely collaborative. And I will forever be grateful for that model in all the various aspects that you have played. So although I'll get to continue to serve with you in different capacity on the on the committee, I want to publicly thank you for that. It's been an honor.
Thank you. And I I will say that talking to you multiple times a day during these difficult times, I think we've become very, been able to use shorthand with each other. And that comes out of a shared understanding and a shared value on putting the kids first. So I thank you for the compliment, but I have learned a huge amount from you two and I am deeply grateful for that.
And just on that note, just to thank the committee for its work on so many different issues this year. Although we aren't where we want to be, I do have faith that we will get there. And we will work very hard in January to be able to get our special needs and our ELL students into some school. So that is a commitment from our team. We will work hand in hand with the city. We will work with our union partners to be able to make that happen. Our students need to be here, need to be with us. So we will, we're hoping that that is in January, at least for our high needs, beginning of February. So and with that, I just, I also wanted to just say to you and to the community to have a wonderful holiday season. And I think we're all looking for 2021 to be to be prominent in 2020, to be in the rearview mirror.
Yes, I think getting kids in schools would be a lovely way to kick off 2021. Are there any items from board members? Ms. Paton?
Thank you, Chair Norman. I'd like to make a request that the district equity plan and strategy be put on a future agenda for the regular school committee, specifically what initiatives are in the works, studies or reviews planned, data or even possibly an equity dashboard for the future. There's been a few things that have popped up this year that were initiatives that it would be really helpful to have a little more foresight about and so that we can support and also see the big picture of where we're going. We're very fortunate to have a talented leader in Dr. Jessica Boston Davis. And so I look forward to hearing from her or her task force or her team that she's working with. Thank you.
And I appreciate you had given me the heads up that you were going to make that request. I just, excuse me, I think it was last night, Sunday night, I made a list of outstanding items and I put that that request in. So Ms. Paton, it is on the list for the new year. And are there any other items from board members? Hearing none, any condolences, Dr. Ackman?
Yes. The Somerville School Committee would like to extend its deepest condolences to the families of Dorothy Bell Heaton, mother-in-law to Allison Bell and grandmother of Amanda Payette, Warren Banbury, father of Allison Bell and grandfather of Amanda Payette, Dominic Maza, father to Chad Maza, Assistant Superintendent of Curriculum Assessment and Instruction, Michael Foster, father of Diana Young, teacher at Argenziano, and Megan Costa, former school committee member, husband of Maureen Foster, former Somerville Public Schools paraprofessional and father-in-law of Matt Young, P.E. teacher at East Somerville Community School.
We are adjourned. Be well, get some rest and see you in the new year. A lot more work to do. Bye, guys.